Okay.
Yeah, we had like four hundred pounds.
I know. It's incredible.
They couldn't put them up.
Okay, everybody, I'm gonna call this meeting to orders. Welcome Andrea.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. Um, we need a motion to adopt our agenda for the city of the whole. Move by Lloyd, second by Andy, all in favor. Good. Um, and there's no one for public input, we'll skip that part. So, I'm just gonna turn it right over to you ladies. The show is yours.
Okay, so I'm just gonna do a quick presentation just around financial statements, just to kinda try and help with the feel of them and what do they actually mean? And how they're actually generated. Um, Andrea is gonna interject at any time if I'm not giving a complete picture that she kinda fills. Um, it's open to questions at any time, so if there's something that you wanna ask at any point, just kinda jump in with a question. Um, I've given you a handout, which is just basically four pages of the financial statements. Um, these are the main ones that were, excuse me, gonna talk around. Um, but obviously you have the, the full financial statements in your package. Um, the financial statements are simply to kinda do a post-audit review at this time. Uh, we're not gonna get council approval on the statements tonight, we're actually gonna leave that for the next meeting. So, if you kinda wanna review the financial statements again after tonight's meeting and ask me for the questions, you can do. So, to give you time on that one. Um, okay, so, very quickly, I just wanted to kinda highlight what financial statements are? And what are the key areas that I actually look at? The financial statements are kinda telling the picture of how the city's actually doing, but obviously in a number-related statement. Um, so there's basically four main areas that we, we cover in financial statements, which are financial, non-financial, our net debt position, and how much accumulated surplus or deficit that we've got. And we have accounting standards that we need to abide by. Um, accounting standards are basically rules that are set out. So, it tells us how to treat certain financial transactions in certain ways. So, when you're comparing financial statements to say City of Roseland, say City of X, or whoever that may be, because the financial standards are the same, it makes it meaningful and comparable. So, it kind of aids transparency, um, it aids the public perception and understanding of what the financial statements are actually saying. And the idea is, is that they're there to, you know, promote and build confidence in terms of how the city's actually performing financially. And the accounting standards that we actually follow for when we're producing the financial statements, or should I say more Andrea, when she's actually doing the final preparation of the financial statements. The accounting standards that we follow are the Public Sector Accounting Board, so you'll probably heard that referred to as PSAB. And for our financial statements to be compliant, there's basically, there's four statements that need to be in there. And these are the four statements that I've just given you on your handout. There are additional notes and schedules that are in the full financial statements that I've not given out. But the notes and schedules are to help your understanding of what these numbers, of these figures are. So, when you're kinda looking at these statements, it'll say refer to note number two. If you go to further financial statements, it gives you more information there to aid understanding. So, that, these are the four main ones that we're just gonna cover, because that's what PSAB requires. So, the first one is that I'm gonna go over is the statements of financial position. So, on the handout that you've given, that is the first page. So, on the statements of financial position, it gives us our financial assets, as in liquid money that we've got, our liabilities, and then it also gives us some picture in terms of what our capital assets are. So, if we're looking at the City of Roseland here, you'll see that our financial assets are nine point one million, which was versus eight million in two thousand and thirteen. So, the main difference is that, uh, we've done quite a bit of work on reducing our outstanding taxes and property and utility account balances, as in we've chased a lot of people up to say, hey, come on, you owe us this money. We have reinstated the loan for Esling Park Lodge. So, a couple of meetings ago, it was discussed in terms of we're still pursuing the full balance there. But many years ago, in the financial statements, it was reduced that balance. So, we reinstated it saying, no, we still anticipate to receive the full balance rather than just a reduced one.
But it was never said to the, to the society that their debt was reduced to eighty-five, that was an internal thing, right?
Yes, the financial statements are prudent, so if we don't expect to, and presumably at that time, because it was prudent, um, it was probably kinda seen at that time that we're not likely to recover that money, so it was reduced. At this moment in time, we're actively pursuing that, there's an agreement in place. So, we've reinstated that in terms of the reflection of what's, um, changed.
What, what was the eighty-five based on, was depreciation on the building, or where did you come up with that?
Somebody came up with an allowance for doubtful accounts, basically kind of like a, a bad debt.
A victory.
Yeah, I don't think there was an agreement, it was just sort of what's a likelihood of.
Okay, and then generally just our, our actual cash balances just increased from our general, um, operating activities. Okay. Then if we look at our liabilities, we've managed to reduce our liabilities from ten point three million to nine point seven million. And again, that's basically, um, one significant difference, um, is that on the money that we received from the gas tax fund, um, the historical requirement was that we reported it as a liability, as in we've received that money, um, but we haven't facilitated, we haven't used it in any way. So, the old standard was, was that we would report that as a liability. That has now changed, and now we actually report it as revenue. So, um, so the basically reduction is in that.
And you'll see the corresponding now is in a reserve fund that you set up.
Yep. Okay. So, if we look at our liquid assets and our liquid liabilities, we are actually in a net debt position of six hundred and fifty-one thousand, which was compared with two point three in two thousand and thirteen. We then, uh, go on to look at our non-financial assets. So, the biggest number there is, is basically our capital assets. So, that's like the arena, city hall, roads, um, pipelines, sewer lines. That's how much that we have on our financial statements in terms of assets that we own. And combine those three numbers together gets you to your accumulated surplus.
Lois, was this non-financial asset, was that taken off the tricky asset management report? That forty-one thousand, is that where that?
Not the tricky one, no, the one before that, I think in two thousand and nine, when the
In the structure.
Required that we went to this, what's the standard called?
Do you remember Andrea? Well, there was no standard for, you know, to me, I didn't even calculate their tangible capital assets, there were always expenses before, you know, everything was brought on in, yeah, when that came into two thousand and nine, all local governments had.
Okay, Mike, you have a comment on it?
Nope.
Is it, are you referring to the facilities and the
Well, I was just
Infrastructure improvement fund?
Yeah, I was just wondering, 'cause I know that number, that, that big asset number that, that does get reflected on that tricky, the tricky, that name is so funny. But the tricky report, the tricky report is really similar to that, so I was wondering if that was the source of it, if it was the source of something else.
No, no, this is the source of the original two thousand and nine.
Okay.
Uh, the asset management used that original report to come up with the, the, um, infrastructure deficit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. So, when we kinda look at our accumulated surplus, the next statement underneath is basically, what, what does that mean? So, we went, so we're basically, what that means is that we've got five point two million in our reserves. We've got a cash surplus of one point one million, and it's the thirty-five million that we own in, um, capital assets. So, that's just kind of a balancing statement right there.
Yeah, so the equity is basically, it's your, what you have in capital, but less the debt that you own. And keep in mind that your tangible capital assets, there are some estimates in there, amortization, for instance, it's not the fair value of your assets. And that's why it's kind of important, um, to, to look at those policies, like they haven't really been changed since two thousand and nine. You know, are things depreciating at the way they expected, you don't have an economic life? So, they're sort of non-cash assets, but it, it can actually make a difference in how things, things look, so it is something to, to consider. You know, if you, you have a piece of machinery you thought was gonna last twenty years, and only lasted ten, you know, maybe it's time to look at everything. Infrastructure, of course, is a lot more difficult, especially when you group it together, rather than, you know, some of you just probably pull it apart, you know, in incredible detail, which I don't know why that adds any more accuracy to it. But you've got like a road infrastructure, kinda like your Columbia-Washington, if you decide, well, the whole thing is gonna take forty years, and then it's toast, you know? Um, or you can look at major components that you're replacing. So, that's something that definitely needs to be kind of monitored.
So, we're looking to get some of these asset management grants, and that's where we're putting that, to, to update these things, to me.
Yeah, to put a closer link between our asset management and what we're actually reporting in our financial statements, that's part of the, of the target, what we're on it at.
Right, and keeping in mind historical costs, if you've got a building that's fifty or sixty years, like in a community that's maybe older than yours, it's a cost that, you know, way below its fair market value. So, that's, so that number is, it's not your, necessarily your, what you would, if you could sell them, you know? So, it is kind of a, a difficult one to add into the mix, you know?
Is it used, I wondered, is it used for insurance purposes?
Well, maybe insuring at fair market value for replacement costs, right?
Right.
It's really a historical cost, so if you've got a, you know, like, and if you have something that was donated, and at the time in two thousand and nine, when nobody knew it was a fair value, they tried to bring in an approximate fair value, but it would be at when it was donated. It was donated in nineteen twenties or something, you know, so you, that's another, you know, it's almost like an off-balance sheet thing to look at. So, when you're doing your asset management, you know, as far as replacement costs, your replacement cost might be three times that much. I don't, I don't know, you know, but I'm saying that's, that's something that, it's a historical cost. And there was a lot of debate in two thousand and nine whether it was relevant for local governments to do this, there's a lot of opposition to it. But I think what it was intended to do was to make local governments, you know, kinda conscious of the fact that they do have tangible capital assets, what do they have? And when that program came in, it was amazing that a lot of them didn't even have lists of what they owned, and they were insuring things that they didn't even own anymore, they were finding out. So, it was a good process, but then, and then what is it, and now just making mindful, okay, now we have to replace this. But there's a disconnect between an historical cost and a replacement cost. So, it's, there's definitely pros and cons, and there was two sides to that debate when they decided to bring this on. And then the depreciation that's associated with it is a non-cash item, which we'll get to on the next paper.
So, then moving on to the statements of operations on page two. So, statements of operations basically looks at in terms of what money came in in two thousand and fourteen and what money went out in two thousand and fourteen. Um, the statements are not reflected in a cash flow basis, it's the basis of when we actually received the goods or services. So, if we received something in two thousand and fourteen, but payment did not leave until two thousand and fifteen, we still recognize it in two thousand and fourteen. Okay? So, looking at our actuals versus budget, so our actuals for revenue was eight million versus a budget of six point six million. So, the main difference is there, is as we said before, the, the federal gas tax fund, it's now recognized as a revenue at that time. So, that's kind of a one-off item that we wouldn't, what we didn't budget for at that time. We've got the, um, other income, which is the restating of the Esling Park Lodge, um, so that's recognized as revenue in that time. And we, we also recognize the gain, um, of land that was contributed to us, um, in two thousand and fourteen. So, we had a contribution of land, which we valued at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and that is the land that relates to Redstone. Um, as part of the development, they were to give us five percent of that land, which was for the Louis Joe Trail, um, protection of the creek. So, because that land has been transferred to the city, we recognize that as a gain, even though it's a non-cash transaction. Um, and then we go to, we look at our expenditures. Um, we have an actual of six point seven million versus a budget of five point seven million. And the main difference there is our depreciation. So, that is a non-cash transaction, so, um, I didn't put it in the two thousand and fourteen budget, so that's why it's missing out of there. Um, the community charter, does it say that you have to budget for depreciation? It doesn't feel that.
It does. Some places do, but then what happens is it's an in and an out, because it's a non-cash item, so it'll, it'll show in your budget, then you'll have like a little add-back kind of below the line to, to take it out again, you know?
But just to, going forward in the two thousand and fifteen budget, I am gonna include it, so it'll give you more of a comparison when you're looking at your financial statements. Um, so generally, we kind of are on budget of where we should be. And then it gives us our, um, surplus. So, we have a surplus of one point four million versus the budget of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, which is basically as a result of the main, um, significant differences that I've just talked about.
And keep in mind, this is the original budget that you passed, not the amended budget that you did in November. So, that's because it's just required under the charter, that it's the original one, when you had the big public consultation, everything, that's what it's seen. But you anticipated some of these changes, not so much on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side, and you amended your budget accordingly. And that is also according to the charter. Unfortunately, it doesn't, you can't have two budget lines, so.
So, how do you deal with the amendment? Because we'd probably be doing that going forward, right, we, as things change, we'll make other amendments. So, do you, in your audit at the end of the year, do you reflect it somewhere?
We, we consider it as part of our audit, audit procedures, so if we're looking at, you know, authorization and approvals, then we look at what was amended.
Right.
But in the presentation, it'll always say. And I think in, actually, I don't know if you got the full one, in the note sixteen that shows how that nine hundred and eighteen thousand got to zero, I did add a, a note there that the city adopted amended budget.
Yeah.
There's certain, uh, changes in anticipated budgets and things like that.
Yeah, I'd seen that, but I just, I just thought it, somewhere it sort of made us look, made us look better because we did the amendment, right? So, we're not completely off, right?
Well, you're compliant, we're, we're very few places I've ever seen that do that.
The idea is, is, um, we have to report against the budget in the financial statements. And because we have to go through the whole public consultation process to get the original budget in place, that's why we have to report against it. It prevents us from kind of going through a fake process, and then going, oh, but we're gonna go and build a swim pool and an arena and all this, uh, which on the amended budget, you don't have to go through a public approval process, so. So, those two are kind of the main statements. The other two are statements that are required as part of our accounting standards. Um, they, we could be here all night discussing and explaining them. Um, they're, they're financial statements which are meant to aid the understanding, but, um, I think the, the first two statements are the main ones. So, I'm not really gonna go over the other two unless you've got any real objections to that, Andrea?
No, none at all, I mean, there's questions I can certainly help answer.
Yeah.
I mean, the cash flow statement might help a little, how did we get from six point nine million to eight point one million? But they're still accrual accounting, it's taking it from, you know, accruals, payables, receivables, and that to a cash basis, but unfortunately, it's not that intuitive on the statement itself. So, if you have specific questions.
Yeah, so, so, so what I was gonna say, so it's because the fact that we're not asking for approval of the financial statements now, if you wanted to go through this, and if you have any specific questions, if you wanna ask me, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Um, so that is basically the, the financial statements in a, in a very, very small nutshell, but hopefully that's a little bit more digestible. Um, do you, do you wanna go over the management letter that you're gonna produce?
Yeah, or maybe I'll, I'll talk just
Do we wanna see if there's any questions on, on any of this first?
Yep.
Anybody have anything?
Other than, oh, go ahead and give it.
Well, we'll just see, nobody has any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I just thought I'd point out a couple of things.
Yes.
Your notice under two thousand and thirteen says restated and no eighteen. So, um, and Lois didn't touch on that. Uh, your MFA deposits, so when you took out, when you take a large loan, the MFA requires that you put a certain amount in kind of in their fund, it's not in your own city's bank. And some cities, and because it's kinda held there in case things go sideways at the MFA, they can actually draw on it. Some cities are more prudent, say, you know what, we're not gonna recognize that till we pay off the debt and they give us that money back. But most now are going to say, hey, we're gonna get that cash back, and it's never in the history. So, because with your new loan, the new four million, it bumped it up a fair bit, so we discussed that, and there's the opportunity to say, you wanna put that on your, on your books now. And there's nothing that prevents you from doing it, it's just simply a policy. So, previously it hadn't been, and so that restated is just a sixty-nine thousand, three seventy-seven, um, in MFA deposits on your state consolidated state in the financial position. And then now you'll see it's up to a hundred and twelve thousand. So, you don't have access to that money?
It's a bind for MFA.
It's kinda like that, they hold the funds back. So, when they gave you that formula, they didn't give you the full four million, they held the money back. Some of it is, when you get it, yeah, and you get it with interest when you pay off the debt, and
Well, that's nice.
Yeah. So, it's not as liquid as your other financial things, you can't draw on that now, but, but you will eventually get it back. So, that's, that's the only restatement that's been on, and the effect of that. And, uh, yeah, as far as audit adjustments, um, a lot of it was just taking it from your internal records, because on an internal basis, you don't, you don't look at it, you look at it cash in, cash out. You're not looking at it the same way as a PSAB statement does. So, most of our adjustments had to do with making sure the accruals are right, captured all your payables. Um, the non-monetary transaction with that land, you know, there was an appraisal of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so that was put on the books. Um, looking at that valuation allowance, reversing that, bringing that back into income this year. And the biggest one was the federal gas tax grant. You signed a new agreement with UBCM this year, and in that new agreement, it says the old agreement is followed into the new. And what they did, I don't know if it's senior government's way of saying, opening it up so that you don't ask for so much money in the future, they took a lot of the stipulations away. You can now spend it on a ballpark, used to be, it had to be very green, you know, so it was such a tight restrictions on how you could use that money. And if you bought something and then you sold it in a period of time, you had to give the money back, so it was always recorded as deferred revenue. But now they've opened it up, they've taken away the, a lot of these stipulations, and under the government transfers standard that kind of changed in two thousand and thirteen, it no longer meets the definition of a liability. So, so that's six hundred and seventy-four, you didn't receive that all in two thousand and fourteen, it's your carry forward from last year, plus what you got this year. So, it brings into revenue and then it's transferred to reserve fund, which thankfully you guys had already set up, so I don't know if it was by coincidence that you knew that was coming, or, uh, 'cause a lot of places haven't actually officially set up their reserve fund.
Lois was totally on top.
She loves, she's, she's great, by the way. And this is a great presentation, um, it's nice to, you know, 'cause these are your statements, they're not our statements. You know, I helped put them together in PSAB format, but, you know, the underlying transactions are, are what your finance department does, and, um, she does a great job. So, uh, yeah, so that was basically, that was their, their main audit adjustments. Um, and as far as management letter, I don't have a formal one written yet, but I was gonna go through just a few of the points that we've discussed, and I, I've had your old, the letter from last year. And, you know, you've addressed pretty much everything that we had, that we had commented on last year.
And the year before.
Yes, definitely.
The twenty-twelve
Which was much bigger.
Yes, it was.
So, last year, you know, we had, we discussed about, you know, development cost charges, I know your bylaws been repealed, you were holding a lot of money right now, and that is deferred revenue. That is not in your reserves, that's deferred revenue. But it's, it's cash that you really should have somewhere else, and you did, there's an MFA setup now that results in eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and that. Same as your reserve funds, they're all fully funded now. Um, it's good to get them in a separate fund, that way you realize, you know, if they're all sitting in one general fund, and sometimes things go haywire and operations go off, then you've dipped into it. This way it really keeps, it's very conscious, um, you know, those are savings that are not to be touched for operations.
This might be an issue next year, or we do do.
Oh. So, that, that's been done. Um, yeah, and the fact that your reserve funds, we couldn't find a lot of the original bylaws. And I really liked how not you only set up them by bylaw, but you've actually by bylaw transferred them now into the separate funds. It made, it made a great, very, I think, so that's all been done. I believe, before, um, like, well, the purchasing policy, we didn't come across anything that was previous at all, that was great. We, you know, we don't conscious, I mean, the, our audit is to look at, are the financial statements fairly presented? But when there's a lot of internal control issues, it's pretty easy to start writing them down. We don't do an internal control audit per se, but, you know, when there's lots of deficiencies, it's, you know, it's easy to find lots of. This time, there, there wasn't, it looks like those, those types have been really tightened up, it's really great.
Well, Lois is still working on a, on a revised purchasing policy, the B C procurement that we expect. 'Cause we did get hammered on that with the audit agenda.
Yeah, no, no, I, I know, I realize that. So, and I, you know, because you are in, in protest, there's not much, you know, too much to say. Um, one thing was talking about the, the tangible capital asset, I was gonna put back in the letter, and I know you are working on that, is to really connect your planning department with your financial department. Um, you know, whether it be looking at the useful lives of your assets, when you still own those assets, non-monetary transactions. Um, for instance, the land that was donated by the developer, because there was no money involved, it doesn't make it through, you know, if nobody, it doesn't get triggered necessarily. So, to really look at that connection between, you know, an asset management and to the finance, you know, how it, how it goes. And there's some land swaps as well, I think some small, um, boulevards are at that.
That comment will show up in the management letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Um, other than that, the, last year we talked about related parties, and I know it's public knowledge, you've got history of issues with related parties. Uh, there, there is a PSAB standard, they keep pushing it off, um, that you will soon have to actually disclose related party transactions, similar that a for business, um, does, especially a public company does. You don't have to disclose those now, but it's very prudent to obviously know who your related parties are, and there's nothing that stops you from transacting with related parties, but it should be disclosed on the basis that you do it.
Put some policies in place around that, though.
Yeah, and you've already got that done, so that's great. That's something that I think you're the only one, but I know at least my eleven communities that have actually taken that on and done that. Um, and then contaminated sites, uh, you've already started to look at that a little bit. It's a standard that got a lot of attention when they first talked about it, it actually comes in next year. I don't know, I'm a little bit, yeah, changing about the whole thing. I did either have a liability, don't have a liability, I don't understand why contaminated sites now, if you have an obligation to clean it up, under the old standards, it's still the same. But they've really highlighted it, you know, um, and so Lois has, has been looking at that, and I'm not quite sure exactly, you know, you don't have a huge industrial base here, so how much money and resources you wanna put on that, you know? But it's something to actually, to look at, and maybe even if, you know, UBCM forums and that, just kinda get a sense of what the communities are. Because originally when they talked about it, I think sometimes KPMG trying to sell their services, but, you know, it was like, oh, you gotta get consultants and you gotta, you know, do this. But it seems like that's backed off a lot now, you know? 'Cause the, the idea is, does an environmental standard exist, and, and are you, is the contamination above that environmental standard? Well, it's even hard to find from the Ministry of Environment what these standards are in certain cases, so it's, yeah.
Contaminated sites, who's responsible for the cleanup?
Well, that's, that's it, if the city is responsible or has taken a constructive
It used to be whoever was responsible for the contamination.
Yeah.
Even in Rosin here, we got, uh, we used door dumps for surfaces under roads and under buildings and that kind of thing.
Yeah, and so that's one thing that it speaks on, is that you might not, not necessarily even have title to that particular property, but there is sort of a constructive obligation by the city to take, you know? So, there's still a lot of gray vagueness in there, and I think it's gonna be a, one that's gonna develop over time. The disclosure in two thousand and fifteen, maybe the city is working on it, the city is not able to, you know, come up with a number, you know? But they, ultimately, they want you to actually put an accrual on there, and, you know, but when are you gonna start paying for it, right? So, I, I don't know, there is still a lot of, um, information. So, that, that comment's gonna be in there, um, not because we have the answers, but because it's something that
'Cause we have to have the answer sooner or later.
Yeah, or at least a, a disclosure that's going to be adequate, you know? And I don't, I don't know if there's gonna be a lot of accuracy, especially at the first go at it, you know, what it's gonna cost.
That sounds like landfill liability to me, you know, all those
Well, there, the landfill's been around for a long time, so I'm not quite sure, you know, to me, I, I would think that the ministry's gonna force you to clean up, whether the standard's in place or not, you have a liability, right, and, and at a timeframe. So, again, it's, um, I don't think PSAB was thinking that one's
Well, let's hope, in some ways, let's hope we don't have to deal with that, because as Lloyd pointed out, Rosin sits on industrial land. They just happen to be a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and forty years old.
Yeah, so you see, I've spoken to the tech, had to tech lawyer, and they've skirted around the issue quite a bit, so
I bet they have.
Um, I can't remember the outcome, but I think we've basically got the closed door in our face, and that they won't accept any liabilities, so
I'm sure they would.
I'm sure they would.
Yeah, yeah. But it, I just mean in terms of, it is an avenue that we're, we are pursuing.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's kinda stalled a little bit at the minute, but we'll pick that up again.
So, so that is something you're exploring, that the actual history?
Well, if, if we can say it's not our liability, it's not down to us,
Right.
Kinda takes away a lot of the, the issues for us, so.
And it'd be worth the conversation with Ministry of Environment, too. If they're not asking for a cleanup, then you don't have a liability either, right? But you may in the future, so it might just be a, a disclosure should, you know, rule change.
Martin DeTrill did an exemption on the way.
I can't imagine what their statement's gonna look like.
They, they did get some kind of exemption, yeah.
Yeah. There's a, it, the, the whole area's treated differently.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But we, we, I mean, not for public consumption, but I mean, years ago when we were looking at lake repealing, you know, that type of, that's lake repealing.
That was Barry Clark's place on the way.
You know, we noticed some of the, the run-up from the mines, of course, um, resulted in, in, um, readings that were above provincial or federal standards. Now, this is all naturally occurring in this area, so it doesn't matter where you go, whether it was mining activity or not. In fact, did you end up with elevated readings on some of the tests? And, um, I think at that time we discussed with Ministry And I think at that time, we discussed with Ministry of Environment, and they didn't see it as an issue. You know, that was, what, 20 years ago?
That was them, yeah. Well, this would be something on the radar then.
Yeah, and I think it's going to be a developing thing as, as communities look at it. I know Vancouver, I was reading, when they first, when it first came out, they thought it was a big thing, and then they started backing it. And pretty soon, it kind of, and especially if your land is in use, PSEB seems to think, as long as it's in use, then you don't have to do anything about it, but when it's not used. And I find that a very odd thing, you know? So, they start.
Contaminator, it's not contaminated.
Yeah, exactly. So, I, yeah, so.
Andy's raised a really good point, that is the distort of nature with some of the contaminants. And, you know, throughout the problems, there have been sort of, you know, areas that are contaminated. And the advice by everybody is leave them alone.
Yeah.
Because if you start mucking around with it, you would in fact create a much bigger problem.
And that's where I think the Ministry of Environment would come in and say whether they're, you know, and I don't know whether they're going to start looking at this. If there's certain, you know, certificates almost, you can say that where, okay, you know, they're not going to require a cleanup. And if they don't require a cleanup, then there's no future cost. Because that's what you're ultimately trying to put on your fence, the statements, what is the future cost to the city to be in compliance with the Ministry of Environment?
Something we'll look forward to.
Yeah. So, then the only other thing was a couple of small payroll things. I don't know if the management letter we're going to, we spoke about a little bit. Perhaps when union employees are hired, even though they have a union contract, something that signs that, that they are, they understand the, the position and the grade level that they're at, just so there's no misunderstanding down the road. Same way you do with management staff. And, oh, and to clarify the city policy on retirement for your sick leave payout. It's called retirement, well, what is retirement? Some people retire at 40. Some people might start at 20, work here 20 years, and at 40, they say, well, you're not retirement age. I think just to maybe clarify what, for sick leave payout, just what does constitute retirement?
That's retirement versus just quitting, right?
Exactly, or, yeah, you know, because presumably, somebody could be quite a bit younger and worked a lot longer than somebody older. And then the older person says, well, I'm 65, I'm retiring, but I can only work for five years. You know, anyways, I would just maybe clarify that, just a suggestion. And long-term disability, our premiums are currently being paid by the city. And that's okay, as long as the employee realizes that the city's paying those disability premiums. If they collect long-term disability, it's taxable. If they paid those premiums themselves, it's not taxable. So, yeah, so I don't know if it's something you'd have to deal with the union on, but maybe, I mean, it won't save the city a whole lot of money, and that's not the point. But a union employee may not realize that if they go on long-term disability, they could have that tax-free had they paid the premiums themselves. In most places, like where I work, we pay our own premiums for that very, you know, concern, because it can make a much more costly down the line. And that was, so they're just little payroll issues. So, yeah, other than that, I mean, the scope of the audit was great. We had great participation from PSEB, everything, everybody was, was super to work with.
I have a little question. I have a little question on, under expenditures. Now, I'm on the, on the, on the, one in the package, on page eight. You've got community support listed, and it's down there as $512,000, which, I'm just wondering what all that includes? Because the community support, I thought, was more in the $300,000 range.
I think it's swimming pool and things, and that, that is, that is something that I can look at, too. What, what is the difference between recreation and community support?
Well, I mean, we have kind of distinct, we have kind of a distinct category for community support, which is what we give to groups to support them. We give them operational support. And then there's also, we actually pay to, you know, do upkeep on buildings that are kind of run by, you know, society. And I, I don't see that as community support, because it's buildings we own.
And that's totally your, I mean, these are your statements and your descriptions, and, because you're approving these in two weeks, not tonight. That's definitely something that can be tweaked out, if you want to separate out that.
I would like to see that tweaked out, because our community groups often look at that. And if they look at this and says, oh, my God, last year you gave $512,000, and this year you're giving $300, you know, we're getting hosed, right?
Oh, yeah, no, we definitely compare those to be apples and apples, so.
Okay, so, yeah, I had that. And then there was another one on our general capital fund, this goes to page 23 of the, of the report. And it, it shows, where are we? Oh, okay, it shows the MFA debt as 4 million. And I'm wondering, that, that's from the general capital fund, and then you go into the water fund, and you go into the, the other, the other funds. So, I'm wondering why that 4 million wasn't broken out, because that's water sewer road for Columbia.
It's been charged fully to your general capital fund.
Oh, it has, not to the water and the, okay. And it was there.
The 4 million, um, it was charged to, fully to the general fund, because we're collecting that money on property taxes.
Okay.
So, property taxes taken in the general fund, so, yeah.
Okay, so a lot of things we break out, like when we look at capital projects, right? They've been broken out, and some are going to water, some are going to sewer, some are going to general, so.
Yeah, yeah, I had a bit of difficulty with that one, just simply when the time of, when I arrived and how we were in the middle of the process. And it was kind of difficult trying to decide how to deal with that one, so.
But it's not a big deal.
That's how we, that's how we went with it at the time.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's good. And then, and then on that developer contributions, contributed assets, you've got the 359. So, we're saying 300 is the, the valuation of the Esling Park land, and the 59 is the Redstone Park land? Is that how that worked out?
It was an appraisal that was done all in one shot, so I'm not.
The 359 is just related to the land contribution from Redstone.
Oh, 359 was the, was the land from Redstone? Because then you mentioned something about Esling Park land being put in, valuation of Esling Park land being put in, too.
That's just the, the debt.
Just the debt, okay, okay.
That's just the debt, just us restating it to the, the full value.
Okay, that's great. I was thinking, or somehow, because we own that land, right? We own the land under that Esling Park building.
Yes, so that will be included in our tangible capital asset there, yes.
Okay, and that was it for me.
Just one quick question about pension liability. Your reason for putting that in the report is simply to alert us next year, you know, at least in 2016, there could be an increase? Is that the reason for putting it in?
Oh, you mean the note itself? It's, because technically, as a part of the Minnesota pension plan, you're on, you're on the hook when all municipalities should be, make some terrible investments, and they actually increase your rate. So, it's like a contingent liability, basically, yes.
So, the.
It's not on your actual financial statement as far as, if we're talking about the same thing, are we just talking about the note disclosure itself? Are we actually looking at the sick pay accrual?
Just the note number 14.
Oh, number four, yeah, okay.
indicating the deficit and the valuation at the end of 2015, so.
And that's just a heads up, basically.
It's a budget line item for 2016.
Yeah, I had a question on that, too, wondering sort of, and this was just kind of idle curiosity. How is that likely to be handled, because that, unless something starts to happen, are they going to?
Well, it'd be interesting to see what they come up with at the end of this year, 2015. You know, for the most part, other ones that I've looked at, that, you know, their pension funds did actually switch around. One audit I do is not for municipalities, it's for another organization. They actually have a five-year increase in their employer contributions from everybody participating to try to boost that fund back up. So, there could, so even this not affecting your current year, or even the next year that we know, it's just sort of a heads up. Should, you know, they might require municipalities to contribute more in order to get this pension fund up. Because of 1.3, well, that's 1.37 million, that's over a billion. It's a big deficit.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was, that was my question. I don't remember seeing this in a note in previous audits.
Oh, it has been.
Okay, and then I just ignored it, right?
Yeah, no.
It's like, oh, big money, I don't care. But, but I'm, I'm curious, because this, this has been an ongoing thing, it keeps getting bigger and bigger every year, right?
Yeah, and that's why they're showing how many active members compared to retired members, too? Because obviously, the more retired members are, the less contributions they're going into the plan, and more drawing on it, so, and, yeah.
You need to be increasing the death rate.
Yeah, there you go. Well, that's, that's part of this whole actuarial thing, they, yeah, and people are living longer and drawing on them.
Yeah.
But I expect that you're going to see that, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not a valuator, but just based on some of the other pension plans, most of these deficits have gone down quite a bit. They're all, you know, their investments have done a little bit better, but, you know, but short of a lot of people who've passed on.
Well, I bet you are happy to come and see all the changes that Lois has done in our department here, made progress.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I mean.
We are, too.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's great, it's great working, great working with Lois. She's always extremely quick to get back to me on anything, and, yeah, no, it's, it's.
Keep talking, you'll get her to blush really soon.
And, you know, I mean, I, well, I will say, it's, it's not very often he finds me, works hard at it, you know? And I don't mean to slam government, but, but, you know, often when we do audit, 4:00, everybody goes, there's a fire alarm, you know? But, you know, she's, yeah, no, she's great. And I think you're really, really lucky to have somebody, somebody like her. So, I don't know if there's any other audit issues or any other.
Any other audit questions? Anybody has anything? We're all good. So, you guys are done?
Yeah, we still have two weeks until you approve, you know, approval. So, as far as breaking up that community support, if that's still the one thing that, uh, we're coming.
The only thing that struck me is, is kind of not, not being the way I'd like to see it represented, right?
Particularly if you're budgeting in a certain, certain way. I mean, these, these groupings, you know, they kind of get carried forward sometimes year to year, and maybe, you know, you know, for sure, these, like I said, these are your statements. And we'll always be careful that if there are regroupings, we, we will restate the prior year to match, but you know, see that viewing.
Right.
And, yeah, then there, it's information that you're providing, so, yeah, especially on the supplementary statements, you can provide as much detail as you want.
Okay, thanks, I'll do it.
Good. Well, thank you very much for, and all the best in 2015.
Yeah, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Andrew and Martin, and we're done. Thank you very much. That was quick and painful.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
I did leave Martin with some financial, he'd asked last time I was here, is there benchmarks, is there financials? He, you know, feel free to ask him for copies. There are indicators of financial condition. There's, there's tend, indicators of financial condition, if you, you know, he asked last time I was here, he said, like, are there ratios, are there things, you know? And as Lois mentioned, PSEB statements are intended to be very prescribed, so that you can compare community to community and net debt. And, but it explains a little more what some of those indicators mean. And it tends to go a little more towards provincial and senior levels of government, because you have gross domestic product in there, right? But on a local government, you would have your B.C. assessment value. So, yeah, I'll leave it for another day, but, you know, he can do a presentation for you when he gets home.
Well, Lois was going to say, Martin, if you can go through that and pull out what might be interesting to the group, and then give it to Cynthia, and she can pass it around to everybody. That'd be great.
You have to read it first.
I know. Don't do it before you read it.
Good.
It's because he asked, and I went, yeah, I mean, maybe, yeah, I know, it might be, sorry that he asked, but.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Fine. So, should we, are, are sandwiches here? There's food, we can go eat. What time did you get back in town?
Uh, just one hour before we came down, so we're okay.
Nice, that's great.
Last minute, stuff reading packages coming through the little canyon.
I'm going to make you beautiful.
We got a white flag around the break, right? Yeah. Google.
A little guy in the back with sticky fingers?
Yeah.
Hey, Lottie!
Food hitting me in the back of the head.
All right, I'm going to go see if there's something to eat. Sarah, you want to join us? You can, it's a little while, okay? A little while is all you got.
There's two people from Roslin on Everest. Mark and Jackie.
Richard.
They heard from them, which is great.
Yeah, they're good.
Yep, they're good.
They're in dingle shape.
I hear there's more than just two from Roslin that are there.
Really?
Yeah, there's a couple other people that are in the neighborhood, too, I heard, but I don't know them, I didn't know the names.
Do you reckon, you know the names and the scratches?
All right. Do you have 20 seconds? You can have a plan. Seriously?
I'm sure that if I decide to have one, it's going to be.
Unless Lloyd eats at all. Lloyd looks hungry. Lloyd looks hungry.
I went to the devil's today.
Therefore, you are not hungry. Or you're hungry, but you can't eat.
This is the first time in 20 odd years I ever had trouble. I gotta go to school.
Mm. 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 Mm.
Uh, because everything we eat has been bad for us.
Yeah.
That's one of the worst things, it's, it's worked once.
Mine is big, somebody noticed. We're keeping it in the bag. Still back in the yard. So somebody, somebody highlighted this for you.
What, what does it say?
Highlighted that my bags on my house are in- At least they will remain until-
Mm-hmm, blows his hair, son. What's that in your box?
Yeah. Fair enough, I got it wrong, first my neighbor told me and I was like, oh, I didn't, I shouldn't have, what you did.
Wonder who's me.
Probably she's in the morning.
No, we're on the, we're on the public works route.
They got their eye on you.
They have the cameras, where are they at, I gotta get better blinds.
Mm-hmm.
Get your garbage bags picked up.
No, I just, I wanna leave them in there, the day the pickups did it off my back, I'd be ready.
So how was your ride back? Was it nice, or did you get wet?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
And cold.
Oh.
I hit, uh, it's good, when I left Nacase, it was good, I got all the way to New Denver and, but, on the other side of the pass there, I'm looking at like-
Yeah.
Wall of clouds and snowflurries coming off the mound. I don't know, it's gonna be fun, my motorcycle. So it was a good test, 'cause I'm not comfortable yet riding in the rain, I haven't had any experience. I didn't know what my, my clothing was gonna be like, whether it could stay warm and dry enough.
Right.
And it was a bit of a challenge, but from, from Spokane City all the way home, and then when I got to Warfield, coming up the hill, it started to hail. So it was-
Oh, no.
But, but, but it was better than Saturday morning. Wake up to that snow, I would not have been leaving Nacase in that. And actually, when we got to, uh, Summit Lake that, just out of Nacase, there was still two centimeters of snow that had fallen that morning on the side of the road, not on the highway.
Yeah.
I thought, wow. Glad we'd be happy to get home.
Okay, guys, this is gonna be really interesting, here it is, we have absolutely no public this time. I wasn't sure, I was thinking after the thought exchange thing, I thought maybe we were gonna generate more people to come or no people to come. That was my, that was my guess, right? So we'll see, but-
So we'll be talking about motorcycles while-
All we want.
Technogron yesterday, it was great.
Oh, hey.
It was open?
Technogron.
Technogron is a great trail.
Ah.
And, um, North Star, two miners, it's a great trail.
Wow, oh, that's early, that is really early. That trail open, Technogron, come here.
There's so many dark spots.
Yeah, it's so cold and blowing.
Maybe after the snow, it's very well, I mean, there's nothing.
Wow.
No snow on the Technogron?
Some cabbage blooming, or?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Everything's, everything's-
Yeah.
Can we have a meeting?
I know, we have it, well, I suppose we may as well, um, 'cause we're gonna have to have a meeting on record whether there's any public or not. So I'd like to call this meeting to order, this is our public input on the financial plan, um, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Andy, Lloyd? Oh, it's public consultation, okay, so we don't need any of that. So we're all good, here we are, we're the public, we're our adoring fans. Yay! We were hoping somebody would come. Pull a chair up. Well, otherwise, we're gonna have to sit here for an hour, right, 'cause we've got a regular meeting at seven, and we can't start it early, 'cause public may show up for that.
Well, this is so neat, isn't it?
Yeah, this is our public hearing on the financial, but don't leave.
You, you were, you were, you were actually at, um, Myrtle Hall, were you?
Yes, you was.
Were you at Myrtle Hall for the- Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, so- So this is our public input session for our financial plan and Lois, our financial officer, has a wonderful presentation just for you, Laura. And you can think of any questions you wanna ask as we go, and you can stop as we go, you can ask questions, okay? And so can anyone else, as long as we're running through this again. Lois, go for it. Yeah, yeah, come on, move it.
This is for you, you'll have to do.
Your own personal presentation.
That's right, don't say this city doesn't give good customer service to our citizens. One-on-one.
Okay. So, the financial plan, so the idea of tonight's meeting is to do public consultation on the, uh, financial plan. The financial plan is not finalized until we have a bylaw in place. So the idea of tonight's meeting is to go through what has been decided so far, which is looking very final at this moment in time, with the idea that the next regular meeting in two weeks' time, that we will do first, second, and third reading on the eleventh of May and have a special meeting on the thirteenth of May for adoption of the, the financial plan because the deadline is the fifteenth of May to have that plan in place.
I'm gonna ask a quick question, is, I am not gonna be here on the thirteenth, will, would there be enough people here on the thirteenth to have a meeting? I don't know, you'll be here either.
I will, I mean, I will be here, no.
You won't be here in the evening.
I will be.
You will.
That's a, uh, Monday night?
No, it's like another, yeah.
You can also do it in the morning, we traditionally don't do it in the morning.
Yeah.
And you're not able to be in the morning after that?
No, I'm not here that, unless we did it at like eight AM or something, right, if you do eight AM, I've got a flight to Victoria on the thirteenth.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we should check that before we get down at the last minute and then not have a quorum, right? You're here? You're here, you're here.
As far as I know.
Okay. Uh, I know Erin is not here, actually, so Erin is not here, so, John, you guys could be here for sure and Martin, we're not sure, 'cause you might be going to Victoria, right? We're gonna talk about that.
It's mainly just that everyone just emails me-
Yeah.
If, if they're here on Wednesday, May eight, thirteenth.
Thirteenth, you have said.
Okay.
Just a quick question in regards to that, uh, that is, that is a specific date we have to finalize the budget?
May fifteenth is the day I have to have submitted it to the ministry.
So the thirteenth is our day to actually vote on the file?
Yeah.
But we could do it, we could do it earlier if you were ready, right?
Yes. One day between third reading and adoption.
Right, and doing, okay.
The idea was, was that we were doing this now, so we've got two weeks, so if the public want to kind of raise concerns, if we need to change anything, we've got that time series there.
So-
So two weeks, so that's Monday, so-
Could we do whatever Monday, the other?
The next regular meeting is May the eleventh.
No, we can't.
First, second, third, then.
We can't, we're gonna do first, second, and third, and you can't adopt the same, you gotta have the twenty.
As a backup, Cynthia, uh, because May the eleventh is a regular, we have the special on the Friday for first, second, and third and then adoption on the eleventh, the Monday. Okay, we will confirm how we're going to go, so first, second, and third on adoption.
That would be better.
First, second, and third, then.
First, second, and third on the Friday.
Okay, so as I said, this is-
I won't be here on the Friday.
You won't be here, but I will be, so I'll take your place. Okay.
Okay, so we will confirm how we're gonna proceed after this, but the idea being is that the financial plan is not finalized at this moment in time. Uh, there can still be adjustments that go through on the financial plan, but as with this, as we discussed before with Andrea, our auditor, the, the final budget that goes through on the bylaw is what our financial statements will reflect at the end of the year. So I'm just gonna go through some, the, the main things to note in the budget. Um, obviously, we've gone through everything line by line already, and we don't need to repeat that. So, the first question everybody asks is what the property tax increase is. So we've got a two percent budget, um, in, in a two percent increase in the property taxes which will generate seventy-eight thousand of additional revenue for the city. Just to put that into some context, the two thousand fourteen VC consumer pricing tax is one percent. So the idea being that additional one percent is meant to fund our infrastructure. Just to give that some context in terms of what is the property taxes gonna be? So, the average house value as per VC assessment in two thousand fifteen is valued at two hundred and fifty-one thousand. With that two percent increase, that's an increase of thirty-five dollars from the two thousand fourteen taxes. With regards to service level, uh, there's no plan changes to the operations and maintenance uh, within Public Works or Recreation or any other department. Um, with regards to water meters, the city is gonna continue converting all the properties onto water meters which will be assisted from the CBT Water Smart Grant.
Yeah. Um, this is the city's property that you're doing, or are we still doing residential?
We're still doing residential, and there's some properties that have old meter, meters which don't actually, um, give a meter read-off, so we still have to manually read them, so we're actually going through, uh, within, um, within meter reads-in.
But are all the ones that were supposed to do it, did they do it?
Nope, there's still a, a small number of residential who have not done that. Um, as I move on, we're looking at the water and sewer rate. So the residents who have not yet moved over onto a water meter, they will be seeing a, quite a premium increase to kind of push them in that.
They'll have a penalty.
They'll have a penalty, yeah. Okay. Yeah. So in relation to the property taxes, when we send the tax notices out, we also collect water and sewer rate parcel taxes. And so there is gonna be an increase on both of those. The water rate parcel taxes are gonna, an increase from a one hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty to one hundred and fifty-six sixty-six. And the sewer, you can see, goes from forty-nine thirty to fifty-nine sixteen.
So, per year?
That's per year, yes.
Okay.
So in relation to the utility bills, um, we're gonna see an increase, um, on both of the water and the sewer rates. Um, at this moment in time, it's not fully completed or confirmed with the water and sewer rate consultants how we're actually gonna do that, but obviously, I need to budget something. So the target is, is that we will have it finalized by the first of July. But in order to make the budget balance, um, I've had to increase the water rate by five percent which will generate an additional twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-six in two thousand fifteen. That's reflected from the first of July to thirty-first of December. And the sewer rate is an increase of ten percent, generating an additional fifty thousand. So, how, how, what does that look like for the average residential house? So how, how, what does that look like for the average residential house? So those increases is the base rate at the moment is sixteen dollars seventy-five. That will go up to seventeen fifty-nine. And then our consumption, uh, for the first thirty cubic meters, it goes from twenty-five cents to twenty-six. Uh, the next, uh, from thirty to a hundred and one cubic meters goes from forty to forty-two and so on. Uh, again, this is not fully confirmed. Uh, this is, this is just, um, a budgeting mechanism, but it obviously is an option that council could look at if they wished.
But we're gonna get the next report from the water consultant that has like the...
Yep.
Some different levels there and all that. Do we, do we know?
I basically, I got that from them the other day. I haven't had, had to, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, okay.
So it's on my to-do list to address.
Because that could really change how we, how we deal with this.
Yeah, exactly. I, I, whatever way we decide to go, we, we basically, for us to achieve our budget, we need to achieve an additional twelve thousand in the water and additional fifty thousand in the sewer. Um, if we decide on a different structure, which is gonna create more revenue than that there, then we'll simply move that into reserves and use that for our capital going forward. So it may be a case of, once we've actually got it finalized, we'll have to do, um, a budget amendment if it doesn't match those numbers. Um, but ultimately, it needs to achieve a minimum of those numbers there for us to balance. Um, and we will need to move pretty quickly on the water and sewer rates adjustments because if we want it to be in effect as of the July first, then it's gonna be quite a substantial amount of work for us to change the software setup. Um, if we're gonna, if, if it's just a percentage increase like this, it's fairly easy to do. But if we're looking at changing how we use our software in terms of moving from the consumption to changing it to meter size, it's, it's gonna be substantial amount of work. So we need to leave ourselves enough time so we can actually get that out. Bearing in mind though, first of July, we won't bill for July, on the first of July, we bill at the end of the month. So it gives us a little bit more breathing time on that.
And we could, that, that's a, that could be a soft target, right? If we wanted to say we want this going into effect in September, could we do that instead of July?
Yeah, but there's a council resolution that we wanted it in the, the first of July. So if the council resolution was changed at that time.
I'm just thinking, if it becomes this huge monster project for staff to get it converted, be better to have a little more time to change the council resolution.
Yeah, agreed. Um, but again, we still need to generate that additional revenue as a minimum for us to balance. If we don't achieve that, I think especially on the sewer side, I'm gonna have difficulties. Uh, well, I'm gonna have to start looking at moving money over from the general fund into the water or sewer, which is an option. We can do that.
But what we're trying to get away from isn't it?
Exactly.
Yeah, so...
Exactly. We're trying to get...
Self-supporting.
Fully funded, fully funded, yeah. So rather than keep propping it up with property taxes, we're trying to get it fully funded, so yeah.
So when this five percent figure came up, Lois, it didn't relate at all to the report? You, you just had looked at the numbers and said, "We need that"?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just basically said, "Okay, what's, what's kind of reasonable in terms of a parcel tax increase and a, um, a utility bill increase"?
Okay.
So, just in terms of if, for whatever reason, council did not like whatever the water sewer rate consultant is and want more time or anything like that, we still need to look at an increase. So I just tried to make sure it wasn't gonna price shock anybody, but it was enough for us to be able to balance our budget.
Great, thank you.
So those are the actual increases that we're looking at on the water side. So on the sewer side, it would look at, um, you have your base rate per month of twenty-three thirty-three. It would go up to twenty-five sixty-six. The residential people at the moment don't actually have a consumption rate, so this doesn't actually relate to residential, it's more the commercial side of things. So moving on to, um, community support. Um, I just kind of put two thousand and thirteen there just to give it a bit of context in terms of where it's been allocated to and how it's changed from two thousand and thirteen, fourteen to two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'm not gonna go through line by line unless anybody's got any questions on it.
Only thing I'm worried about for us all is to look at that financial assistance. Sorry, the trail swimming pool is at sixty-eight forty-one. And I think we've basically spent that already now, pretty much, maybe have four hundred dollars left in that fund.
By April.
Yeah, so just bear in mind, we're gonna get a lot more applications from people wanting money from there.
It is a good point, though, as well. There is nothing in the budget, um, in terms of if you wanted to come with an agreement with Trail. We haven't got anything in the budget there. Um, but on the other side of the suite, there is a totally separate point. Um, we do have in the financial plan a hundred and three thousand for legal settlements. From the financial statements with the auditors, it's actually been recognized in two thousand and fourteen. So I'm gonna take that out of the two thousand and fifteen budget. So it gives us an extra hundred and three thousand there. And even good news, again, on top of that, is, um, going completely sideways for a little bit. Um, I had a GST, uh, consultant review guy come in. He basically goes through our transactions for the last three or four years. For four years, I think he went through. Looks at all of our transactions and kind of looks for where did we not claim GST and we could have done. And, um, from that, on the hundred and three thousand of the legal fees, there's actually GST included within that. So we can actually recoup some of that money in there, so... So just to let you know that there is a hundred and three thousand in the two thousand and fifteen budget, that's...
Okay, so where are you going to put that money? Just in, uh, general reserves or...
I was gonna put it in major capital fund in terms of putting it towards Washington.
Um, and then the other thing will be the potential savings on the, on the healthcare. If we make those changes, we'll get some reduced premiums. That'll be more money that we're saving.
For, for me to be prudent in the financial statement, uh, I would suggest we leave that in for now. Uh, the signal that would send to, to staff, uh, is, yeah. I'm, I'm, I don't think we should take that out, just to be prudent.
Broadband is out, right?
Yeah.
Broadband is a hundred and eighty-seven.
Broadband is out. We'll come on to it, uh, the, um, the capital and the special projects. Uh, there is a little bit in for the consultant, but I'll come to that. And then just, um, a little bit more on community support, but this is operational. This is, we don't write people a check. This is how much we contribute in terms of, uh, city staff time and equipment. So yeah, so moving on to special projects, you'll see, just talking about broadband, you'll see we've got six thousand in the budget there. That is for the consultant to look at, uh, what we have now and what is, what we best need, basically. So, um, that may have moved forward a little bit, but that's what we've got in there at this moment in time.
Lois, where did we put the money to fix the, we had something for IT improvements, right? Remember?
That is...
Fifty-six hundred dollars or something. Where was that?
That's there in capital expenditure. I, since, when we, uh, kind of went through everything initially, I can then went through it again and kind of gone, is it that in the right area? Is it special projects or is it capital? Just because when I was doing the, going through the audit with, um, Andrea and producing the financial statements, how it was done before was not great. So I just tried to make sure the two thousand and fifteen budget would ease how the financial statements go. So I've just moved things into different areas.
Well, I think that's a question that we had brought up before, and I think maybe it was Martin, of talking about the difference between small capital and big capital and special projects. So now that's gonna get a little more clarity going forward?
There is a policy in terms of what's capital and not capital that is given out. And to me, that kind of defines what's capital and what's not. The special projects are, it's something that we don't necessarily do every single year.
No, yeah, neither is rebuild of Washington Street. We don't call that a special project, right?
But that's capital.
I know, but I'm just saying, yeah, okay.
The size of that, what we know, that's capital.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's either operational, it's capital. If it's not capital, then it's generally a special project, for simple terms. Either way, it's all money going out the door.
Yeah, I think Lloyd had something, then Andy, he had something.
Who?
Oh, you did, okay, Andy.
Um, just noted that those two budget items, both the broadband consultant and our telephone ID, uh, IT upgrades, I would hope that we could do the consultancy first before investing in a bunch of upgrades that may or may not be of value to us.
I haven't got anything budgeted for telephone upgrades.
Uh, well, it was, how did, how was it termed? It was, said something about teleph...
The broadband stroke telephone consultant?
Yeah.
Um, when we're talking about broadband, there's this whole view that to, to get the most out of broadband, we need to upgrade our telephones. But we haven't put the upgrades of the telephones in because we wanted to see what the consultant comes up with first.
Great, great.
So there's nothing budgeted in terms of telephone upgrades.
Nor, nor IT? That, because won't, won't, won't that change, would the, admin of broadband change our whole, potentially change our IT requirements?
As far as I understood it at the minute of how I budgeted it, is that CBDC are looking at spending all the money to get it here, and then we simply become a customer of them. Now, from what I've seen of if we become a customer of them, it's gonna cost us more money from what we've got now. But the idea of the consultant is, is to look at all of that and go, "What do you really need"? You know, "Do we actually have to become a, a customer of CBDC"? If it's cheaper for us to stay on what service provider we're on now, surely that would be the better route, but...
And the, the IT stuff is to get the, the IT mysteries within this building sorted out. And that really doesn't even do broadband, per se, right? That has to do with your connectivity in the, in the building, right?
But isn't it gonna change, that, change when broadband comes in, potentially?
Not necessarily. If you don't have a functioning internet, you don't have functioning internet access in the building, right?
Okay.
It won't, it won't work either way, right? If you have all the broadband in the world, if it doesn't work in the building, it doesn't work in the building.
Okay.
So...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not at all adverse to this kind of stuff or, or, you know, understand it. But I, but I just, I just hate to spend money on something that, you know, could change six months down the road, you know, wow, we, you know, we should have waited.
Well...
That'll be supportive of the...
Yeah, on a hazard assessment plan, is that something that we do every few years? Or has it ever been done, or, or what?
No, it's...
And who does it?
Um, as far as I can say, no, that we've never done it before. And it's a new, um, requirement that we have to, to go through under hazard assessments on all of our buildings. Um, we're gonna fund some of it with grant money, um, but I believe it's a consultant that we need to get in to do it.
And by hazard assessment?
Um, I can only do, um...
That'll be a good thing to know what, what that really is and what the really...
Yeah, um...
Mike, would you have any, um, idea what that might entail?
There'll be some asbestos abatement and that kind of thing, like assuming the worst rise of all asbestos. So they have to take, you know, if they wanted to fix that, they gotta take that out.
So that might lead to budget stuff?
Might lead to having to contract that asbestos abatement.
Okay, and then another thing is the circulation and the venting in City Hall. Like, does this go back to a few years ago where, I don't know, we spent thirty thousand dollars for the gas tax fund to do something to the air here supposedly to heat the pool?
It was a heat exchanger for the, for the pool from, yeah, and then it got taken out and never got reinstalled. But I think actually that's talking about ventilation within the building. It's two different things.
Okay, well, on the other thing, not this. Did, did something go wrong? Did somebody install something wrong? Or did we purchase something we didn't need? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm not actually sure what, what happened with that. And the, and then it just sort of got put on hold, um, but I think the unit is still up on the roof. It's just disconnected. It got disconnected when the roof was resurfaced. Does this sound familiar to anybody?
So it did work?
It might have been before you were here, yeah.
It did, for me, it did?
I think it did work. I think it did work, and then there was some problems with it, and it didn't work. And, you know, so it, it, it's been sitting aside until someone who has an interest in it comes back and looks at it. Energy efficiency kind of people.
Well, yeah. So I wondered if that was going to be included in...
Well, I mean, it's something, it's something we can look at. It just has kind of fallen off as a priority because we have so many other bigger priorities.
Right, but it seemed like a great idea, and then...
Right.
Never mind.
So did the auditors.
Yeah. This one was about, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um... I guess that's all for that page.
Okay. Is there any other questions on that page before I carry on?
No, this is good.
Okay. Then that's looking at special projects for the water and the sewer fund. Rather than we read them out individually, does anybody have any questions on them?
There was a question about the valve or something at Redstone. Is that what that, uh, twenty-five thousand is?
No, the one that we added at, at Darren's request?
Yeah.
I think that was the Redstone culvert.
Yep, that's the Redstone culvert.
This, this one was in the budget last year.
Correct.
And it wasn't done.
This is a valve or something.
I'm pretty sure these are.
Yeah. And that is gonna go ahead this year.
Okay.
Yeah, wait, wait, go flip back lawn thing real quick. Down there, the inflow and infiltration, right, fifty thousand dollars. That is absolutely essential that we get on to the I N I because of where we're looking with the regional, with the regional district and our flows getting to that plant. So that has, that's a directive to our new I C A O to make sure we start addressing that. Really important.
We, we had that in the budget last year too, and only spent three thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, this...
We've cut equipment. Now we're gonna pay for that.
Well, we're gonna, we, we have to, it's not just the smoke testing, it's repairing where the, the results of it.
You gotta know where they are.
Mike?
So, how formal are we here?
Yeah, we don't have to be formal.
Um, I just wonder if fifty thousand's gonna, uh, sustain us through twenty fifteen and into budget next year? If we have to do a dig or, or actually fix a pipe that's accepting a lot of I N I. FYI, throwing it out there, that, that could easily dip, get out of range. So very small section of pipe with a dig, say a hundred meters, um, we should burn that up real quick.
No, we're gonna have to, we've got to start somewhere, right?
Yeah, I'd just like to know that.
Yeah.
If that can go away quickly, we might have to come back to council.
Yeah.
No, no problem doing that, but just letting you know.
Okay.
Yeah, fifty grand is not much.
No. All right, no, thank you. Get on that one.
So then these are the capital projects that we've got in the budget. So it's finishing off Pinewood and Tamarack Drive that was started last year. Last year was just the water that was done, so this is completing everything. The equipment replacement program, um, I know Darren has got concerns about this, so I'm gonna revisit it with him. And then just a few minor upgrades. So the, the information, uh, systems at the bottom there, that's in reference to the quotes that we had from our IT providers for some hardware upgrades.
And then on the, uh, repair of railings, I see the repair of the railings is going forward on, um, Washington up there from first up. Is that included in that, or is that included somewhere else, do you know?
No, it will come out of that budget there. And if there's any money left over after that, it will be just, um, repairs and maintenance elsewhere else.
That was contracted over, wasn't it?
I don't know.
That, that rail they're doing, yeah, contracted.
That's a contractor working on it.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be insurance on it?
Pardon me?
Uh, that was, there, there was an insurance, we tried to go after insurance on it, but the guy was driving a rented car and wasn't insured with, didn't have any coverage, I guess, for driving in Canada. He was from the U S.
Was that the car accident that happened?
Yeah, yeah. And, no, 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 that's a new one.
It's a hard one?
Yeah, there was, no, no, it's, a guy died, right? A guy died. Um, Lois, are there any other options on pursuing anything with that? I, I can't remember whether there was anything I wanted to look into.
I don't know, Darren was pursuing it.
Okay, we'll, we'll see. I don't think there's insurance, but, you know.
It, it just, um, seems to me that if we go back to the hazard assessment, which seems to be for buildings, right? Um, and there was a fellow in who talked a little bit about the library and said, "For years, the library group needed..." Yeah, Mitch, um, needed, uh, well, somebody needs to look at it somebody needs to look at it, um, because he thought it was failing or whatever. And I'm just wondering, you know, if we're going through the trouble of doing assessments on, you know, building by building, that maybe we expand the scope of the assessment to include all of the structural issues or repair and maintenance issues and-
You mean beyond buildings, or, are you speaking-
For the five or six buildings that we have.
Well, it is for buildings, right? Alager is one of our buildings.
Right, I mean, the hazard is, um, the hazard assessment is obviously used for hazard identification, and that may be insulation or whatever, I don't know. But, um, there may be some other issues, so as we are doing these assessments, maybe we hire the right kinda person who's able to look at, you know-
Well, that's a good question to find out what the hazard assessment plan for all city-owned buildings actually is. What hazards are they, are they looking for, right?
Certainly, the question's big, yeah.
Yeah.
Just deferring here, I'm obviously day one, but I think you can think about are electrical, that are usually, you know, historically an issue for fires if you're on the open circuits. But we should probably be okay in our public plans, I don't know, that might be like voids and asbestos.
Well, if this is a requirement that we get this hazard assessment plan, in the requirements, it's gonna say what they're gonna look for, I'm assuming. And I'm just saying, cause council doesn't know, so that'd be a good thing to have staff come back and just tell us, what, what is that gonna do for us, this hazard assessment, besides then, you know, ten thousand dollars of our money, right?
So, so the, the question that I have, it's very simple, it's, it's, you know, we've heard a lot of consultants time to go around, uh, looking at these buildings, so maybe we can hire the right kinda company who can, you know, look at a myriad of things.
Yeah, but at this point, we don't even know what's, what's the base required, so let's find that out first, and then we can-
Kind of a suggestion.
Yeah, no, it's a good one. Okay. Anything else on capital projects? Anybody have any, any comments? Nope, on to the next.
So, just in reference to, um, our capital, so we're looking at, uh, we've applied for a grant to do Spokane and First Avenue to Washington, which is the, the red shaded area. And the cost at this moment in time is one point eight million, and we have requested grant funding of one million. In the budget, to be prudent, I've not budgeted that we'll have any grants successful. Um, so I've budgeted that, um, the full amount will be funded via debt. So if we are not successful, we still have a financial plan of how to fund that going forward. Um, if we don't, uh, if we are not successful with the, the grants for the areas shaded in red, um, I've got it phased in three, um, sections over a number of years to do that.
Is the first section that blocked from Columbia the first?
Yeah. I think I've just simply taken the one point eight million and divided it by three, just to, to put something in. And then for Washington, we've applied for a grant to finish Washington off, so all the way from Second up to the top. Uh, in the budget is the current indication that we've got, and this is what was put on the grant, so it's gonna cost nearly five point nine million. We've requested grant money of four point one million, uh, that's from two grant sources. Um, I put that we're gonna fund, um, we're gonna use all of our tax, uh, gas tax money to fund, um, Washington. Um, after reviewing our DCCs, I think we'll be able to use three hundred and thirteen thousand from DCCs, which will leave a balance of five hundred and eleven, um, thousand to be funded by the state, uh, fingers crossed all being well. So, um, it's, that, that's a kind of a good case scenario. But again, like I say, in the budget, I've actually budgeted that we'll have the gas tax money, the DCCs, but I've budgeted that the rest of it will be funded via debt.
And, you know, again, I, you're just looking at the diagram, um, it, it's not going over to Highway three B, right? It's, um, just going up to Kirkup.
Oh, sorry, yeah, to Kirkup.
And was there any discussion at the staff level about taking it over to three B? Because that little sentiment is pretty rough.
Oh, so from a, a structural standpoint, the, um, the sewer water is, is the issue, is it not? So resurfacing the balance to the highway may, may be a possibility, but it, we don't, we don't, is there requirements for infrastructure there?
But I think, isn't, doesn't the sewer water come down, comes down the older ones?
Part of it's done now, right?
Comes, comes, there's sewer line that comes across from, uh, Centennial Trail.
Correct, that's, yeah.
Cause that line, you can trace that if you're walking on the trail, and that comes down.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a spider web network below Kirkup and McLeod.
Right, so that explains the, the, uh, the scope of the project and-
Just a question, Mike, did they go from First Avenue to Second? Did they, I didn't think they went all the way up to Second?
With last-
On Washington.
Uh, Wash, the, uh, phase one of the project went just above First. It stopped-
Just, yeah, halfway up the hill.
Not even.
Not even halfway, yeah, so really we're starting from one, from First, right up to Kirkup.
So, the image in there pretty much covers it, right? Yeah.
Okay.
And that requested grant funding, that's in alignment. I can't remember what we said when we had that conversation about what we wanted to ask for in the grants, but that's how it worked out. I think we just gave you percentages or something of what we said.
No, and the second grant from EBCM, we requested two million.
Yeah.
And the one previous was, um, two thirds funded, so we put in the application just for the water, and, and then we just asked for two thirds of that. So then just looking at, um, our reserves, um, so we're beginning to address, uh, our, um, balance of reserves, and in two thousand and fifteen, we're gonna increase our reserves by one hundred and ninety-one thousand. In two thousand and sixteen, uh, we've got a withdrawal from the reserves for the minor toll renovation, cause we've been putting fifty-five thousand into reserves each year for that. And I put that we're gonna refund the Queen Street retaining wall from our capital funds reserve. Um, so then in terms of our general fund, uh, general reserves, uh, we're looking at an increase from three point eight to four point three. Um, in the terms of water reserves, there's no kind of large movement in there, um, and the, from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, there's kind of fluctuations in there, but it remains ultimately the same, about six hundred and seventy-five thousand. For the sewer reserves, um, this is more of an area of concern. Uh, we have a hundred and ninety-two thousand in our reserves at this moment in time. Um, and then we're going to use, uh, some of that in two thousand and fifteen, uh, which is gonna leave a balance of thirty thousand. And then in order to achieve a balanced budget, I have to use the whole of the reserves in two thousand and sixteen. So as of the end of two thousand and sixteen, we have nothing in the sewer reserves. Um, and then in, we, we won't start contributing back into the reserves until two thousand and nineteen. And that will be in an amount of about two hundred and ninety-four thousand. That's kind of the main points, like the main topics in the budget, main kind of areas of conversation. Um, I didn't do the presentation too long on purpose, so I could kinda cover what the main points are, but then if public have any specific questions, we still got time for it.
So, the package that Laura has, is the, is the detailed package?
Yep, so the package basically is the presentation, and then the, the detail of it. So it's kind of the nice, kind of summary of it, but then if you really wanna go through line by line, it's in there as well.
So, Laura-
Okay, so I may-
Yeah.
Well, I didn't really-
Not tonight.
Much of a chance.
And, and the next, and the, and the beauty is that we've got two weeks.
We've got two weeks, yes, um, but in terms of, uh, when we're gonna do first, second, and third reading, if there's any adjustments that needs to be done, it kinda needs to be done before then. And at this moment in time, there's nothing scheduled to meet again, so.
Well, why don't we, we, we can take in any input if we get it, I mean, given that Laura's the only one here. Laura, if you have something to tell us, you tell us, otherwise I, unless any of us-
No, 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 I have one more question.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what page it was on, it was the Recreation and Cultural Services expenditures.
Okay.
That's what it said, and I forgot to write the number.
That's okay, what's the question, I'll see if I can answer it.
I, I only had a chance to glance at it, but it looks like some big differences in the numbers between two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Does it say that?
Are we on page eighty-six, Recreation Administration Events and Programming?
I can't see, oh, two-
In two thousand and fourteen, it was a hundred and twenty-six thousand?
No, no, it was, uh-
If you want, if you wanna email me the question, I can reply to you.
Well, it, it had to do with, it was like seven hundred and sixteen thousand, like in two thousand and thirteen, that went out to seven hundred and sixty-four thousand. It was probably administration.
Oh, so it's definitely not, it might not be recreation?
I don't think it's a building, it just said recreational and cultural services in expenditures. You have a revenue, some expenditures, the business numbers.
There it is. Oh, sorry, financial statements.
Yeah. Oh, we're looking the wrong thing.
Those are the numbers, but it started even, even lower than that. It's, no, they were actually different numbers than that, but they were very, very similar. It didn't say actual, it said year to date.
Laura, do you remember where you saw it? Do you remember what you were looking at?
Over here, Laura.
So, so we're in Recreation Administration Events Program and Recreation Services, and this is year to date?
Does that mean what's it?
Recreation Cultural Services.
So there would be a total of all of saying-
Seven sixty-one, seven thirty. Yeah, but it wasn't this page, but, hey, I knew you were looking for that.
Yeah.
Do you wanna email me the question? And, no, I don't mind.
No, Laura, there's one that says Recreation Cultural Services on the Consolidated Statement of Operations. In two thousand and thirteen, it said seven hundred and thirty-four, and then the two thousand and fourteen budget said seven sixty-one, and the two thousand and fourteen actual said seven ninety-three, does that sound in my head?
I think so, the one on YouTube.
Okay, well, if you-
It was, it was broken down, it was, I didn't see that page, actually.
Well, you know what?
But there, but there was some giant increase, like a fifty thousand dollars from what was budgeted and what was spent. I think in two thousand and fourteen, that was.
Yeah, this was thirty thousand. Yeah, I mean, it's thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, huh.
But it's, it's, well, anyway, if you come across it, let us know.
Okay, is it, is here, so a lot more what's done than-
Yeah, I'm sure there's an explanation for it, but we're not quite sure what we're looking for, right? Or where we're looking, so. Um, what I was gonna say, Lois, is if there is, if we get comments from other members of the public, or if we have questions and we feel like, well, we need to make some changes, we'll get in touch and we can get a special meeting or something. I think we should just plan on marching ahead, cause actually, we've been, we've spent so much time on this, I don't think there's likely to be anything really dramatic, right? So, I think it's just needed.
Shall I go to German, to the meeting?
Are we, are we done?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Do you have a question, if I recall, um, there was a restaurant, um, package that was supposed to come.
The, the thing, the BC government?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, um, that was-
Did we ever get that?
It was in our information package.
It was in the information.
It was in the information?
I don't doubt it, but actually I-
And in the agenda.
Of that last meeting? Not this, yeah, in the, in the consent, the consent count, right? Yeah, it was, and then we were told that the front, uh, we were told that the front office, Martin, we were told the front office people have it, and so when people come in and ask, they're giving that resource, yeah. Did you have another question about it?
No, I was, um, going to, uh, take it to the restaurants and restaurants.
Okay, Cynthia says that it's in the front racks there too. It's for people setting up new restaurants, isn't it? That's what it is, so people having restaurants already probably don't need it. But, uh, the gal that does the Thai food, right, she should have it. So she's gonna open a Thai restaurant.
Okay, so just before I everybody runs off, I've just got, um, some forms for everybody to sign. Basically, um, it's just to get your authorization signature on the MFA, which is the Municipal Finance Authority. So if we wanna do any kinda transaction, putting better, put, put money into our investment account, or more, take it out, it's just, uh, one member of staff has to sign, and, um, one member of council has to sign. So just in case Mamo's not around, I can get the next person, so. Unfortunately, the forms are not great, I've blown them up as much as I can, so that's yours, John, and that is where you need to sign, so. That's, this is the official form signed, as terrible as it is, thank you. It's very small.
Yeah, and then we had a special meeting, and then adopted the regular meeting on the other one, so.
Thank you.
No, it's engineered, it's engineered, yeah.
Just there, unfortunately, it is small, and it's the most, I could blow this up to try and make it a reasonable size. You're already on, but I've done it again anyway, just to update your title.
Yeah, so they'll turn up.
Thank you.
Good job, Lois.
Thank you. Um, I have someone for you as well, so.
Um, Cynthia, did you happen to look at last year's question? Do you, it looked like it was kind of all the same stuff, that was the, my only question was, was there anything different, right?
You know, in the provincial election, um, NDP was close to second, the provincial election, open pen.
Close list is kinda scary.
Very close.
Well, the city data request was pretty scary, when we reduced the budget to forty, forty-four hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's okay. No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Keeping it both?
Yeah.
Two thousand and fourteen, five, it was sixty thousand dollars more.
I, I can look at the numbers and tell you they had these out, but off the top of my head, it was, it was like the expenses for the drain pole in two thousand and fourteen, that's a one-off thing that would've been, and it wouldn't be in two thousand and thirteen. I think there's some overage to the arena, that would seem as, again, not something that did the great.
No, like it, just, you know, it depends on-
I thought it was, it was more expensive.
Both are two around with the same, so one of them broken out here.
Sound like a total not full in it.
I think, um, both came with a policy, their budget and what to do, right? So the budget was getting pretty-
Yeah, I talked to that, they're asking for rental, they're mighty salty.
Did they not do, have, I thought they did that, and it was passed for the free film.
Um, yeah, so I see what you mean.
Look at this, waving a rattle for this, showing a movie or something.
Yeah, yeah, let's just, I will, I will look at that.
Yeah, see what we spent last year, I'll be up here. I don't, what I read there...
Right, we have that on the financial thing, which is...
I actually saw it was twenty-four hundred dollars.
This, this might be the amendment, so we've, I had me to, I will do it, and I'll email it to you.
I have a lot of respect for those two, because of them, for the media. My respect for them is going down, and my respect for the media is going down.
Yeah, yes.
Which you wonder how many other current media people are, you know, they're just waiting to get their chance.
Okay, so it's...
And perhaps not reporting.
So the only thing it doesn't include in there is capital. Capital.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah. Yep, um, but don't worry, I can go through that, I'll look at the numbers exactly, and I will send you a nice summary, so if you need to understand.
Okay, that'd be great, that means sometimes it's a little...
Yeah. I'm glad you could be out, because, um, I haven't had, you know, I've looked at it, I haven't listened to that, as much details I want to share, so.
I mean, I mean, I'm really into...
I had the cold before.
He had the cold before, and now he's...
Yeah, might have, might have had help.
Yeah.
So to try to understand that.
Yeah.
Some of those things, they were mine, so we've always been sending my hands to that, looking at the stuff.
This year?
Yeah, comparison to last year's, those city days, but that's fine, I can do that, I can do that. Cynthia, is somebody else presenting, or do you want me, um, out of the way? Well, I, I, do you want me to cut, uh, switch this off first?
I'll leave the laptop on, so if somebody... What do you want to do with these ones, because that's, that's kinda...
Um, you can put them for one, oh, Laura, you said something like that?
Oh, it's the night driving, and...
It used to get so hot.
Night driving, yeah, I don't wear them around here, it's a night drive. So as soon as I got found, I was, I said, it's good.
Yeah.
You have no idea what the weather's like.
With the weather?
Weather, there's, you know, an eight-year cycle, fifteen years. There's a billion years, like, all happening up there, too. We never win. Do you have those meetings, or were they intended, because they handed away?
I don't want to speak here for each, and the... I don't know, let me see. So, first and foremost, that's...
You know, the cost for that.
Anyway, they were trying to say that, don't worry, everyone this year is...
Oh, so basically, after that...
I mean, you could leave and come back.
Well...
We're not trying to be combative, though.
It's gonna make the hotel a hill.
Before the course, one of the...
And then, if we act, to be gentle, does it go at the beginning again?
Oh, yes, that's...
When this is added to the agenda, does it go at the big...
At the beginning.
Future summer, I mean, Bass has got help from out in Gonzales, but they have a ski hill.
Yeah, exactly.
Same thing as the one in...
Did you want a copy of?
Yeah, and they're gonna be good there.
See if you have one. Um, the city days letter, yeah, from the making of the budget, and, um, here's a...
A couple of trails?
This is our request from last year.
Well, Eric Flag just had a great idea. He wanted to, there's a pretty decent road to the public right now. Sure created, too, good, and it led to several, because he looked at tourist, um, the people are the big tourist venues, and it's not golfers, it's not mountain walkers, it's not skiers, it's kind of...
Nothing personally, I'm not sure. I did put like information on that, so.
Right up a chairlift, and three lifts, it's just like a beautiful ride. And get off the top, and they walked around the top, and then right...
They didn't get better if you got the top, so...
So they signed off, they got all the third-party work that had to be done?
Yeah, this is what we just, just filmed it, so.
Yeah, she had a little, like, interpreter trailer, something with some signs saying, well, names are in the tree type center and all that stuff.
Yeah, or down, you know, go down the ridge and down where the old man...
Yeah.
And the covenant, covenant is public.
Although, they can't do downloading on the great chair, I don't think they, you know, download faster.
No. I don't see why not.
Well, you look, when you go up, right, the ship is definitely on the upside, it'll have like... I mean, you could send a couple, you could do that.
People is gonna add a lot of weight back. You might have, you might have that, please.
Well, I know what they do, um, it's quite popular in a long point, it's changing where they have the old lift, because they do... You knew, like, you got a Nike, you know, you...
Floating everywhere. Yeah.
You can still work it out, the guy's actually real good at...
With the, um, the old silver little chariot, and so, those, gonna stop fish because of the head.
Oh, yeah.
Load about six or eight chairs, and then run it.
Okay.
They did that on the ramp, or, uh... Uh, when they had, they had chairs, so, so they could only do that, you can only run it slowly, uh, so they just have to run it at a certain speed.
I didn't love it either.
It's done? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there to, uh, the other, is there to do in there?
Yeah, a little more extensive, but did you find out what?
I do remember.
Did they overshoot the budget last year?
Yeah, you were right, well, it's fifty-nine hundred, fifty-nine hundred last year.
Okay, well, so I just handed out the copy, and then I've kinda got, so I give it to Sarah, so it's all to the image, but we just have concern that we've got my name, so I'm just, uh, popping, and then tonight, but it's just concerned about the, the name being, so if we can avoid saying names, that's okay, bye, okay, thank you.
I guess the question was, can we get, overshoot the budget now? They've been around a lot of...
I don't know, right? It doesn't say, it says what, it just says what the bike is, and what the actual was, um, here, and I'd have to go in and look back, mm, see. Okay, everybody, you know what, we can look at it later, because I can't, I can't look at it right now.
Which meeting is it?
Yeah, no kidding. Hey, so Cynthia, do you want Evergreen and Unfinished Business? Request arising from for us audit? Yeah, recommendations and staff for decisions. I think so, so we'll make it, uh, seven E, seven E. And then help me if we get there and I skip it, okay? Okay, okay. Where's Laura? Hello, so nice to see you again. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order, and first up, we have our public input session, so if there's anybody here who wants to speak on something that isn't actually on the agenda, just come and talk to us, you can do that. If you're on the agenda, just wait, and we'll, we'll get you in a minute. Anybody? Laura, come on forward.
It's on the agenda, but, um, I have, uh, number seven, we're talking about the Municipal Insurance Association. Could you just explain what it is, what that's all about?
Okay, you know what, we will, as soon as we get there, yeah.
Yes, that's all.
That'll be great, okay. Um, anybody else? Okay, uh, again, motion to adopt the agenda, and we have one amendment, okay, John, and seconded by Andy, and we have one amendment, which will be seven E, we're gonna amend to include a resolution on the Evergreen Covenant. Everybody okay with that? Okay, you there, Cynthia? Okay, so, uh, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Good, thanks. Um, okay, so, registered petitions and delegations, first up is Yan. You guys, topping it, topping off the list. But first of all, you have to admire our new artwork in chambers, we are on our second group of artists now. This is Amy Exner and Tim Peacock.
I know, it's great, I, I saw Mayor Moore coming out of, um, City Hall on a Sunday with a hammer. And I said, oh, really, is that part of the mayor's job description, hanging art?
Fantastic. Yeah, that's right, that was, yeah, anyway, okay, so, please, talk to us.
So I know, um, my understanding is that there was a lot of stuff in your council's package about the Youth Action Network. Um, I, I will not try to reiterate it all. Um, so what I thought was, I wanted to give, um, since this is a new council, and I haven't talked, well, I did sit in front of you a couple weeks ago about a grant, but I haven't talked specifically about the Youth Action Network and what it's done so far and where it's going, so I wanted to give you a brief update on that. Um, and then there's a couple of things that were in the package around decisions, and so then I just wanted to have an opportunity, if you have any questions about what's going on, so. Um, real quick, the background is, is the Roslin Youth Action Network, um, runs as a program of the city of Roslin. Uh, it's funded by the community-directed youth funds through Columbia Basin Trust, so we've received twenty-five thousand dollars a year, we're in our second year of a four-year promised amount from them. And, um, for those funds, each community got to decide how they, each community that applied and receiving got to decide how to, um, proceed with those funds, and so the decision in Roslin was to hire a coordinator. So that was me, I got hired in September of two thousand and thirteen, uh, and since then have been on the dead run. And, um, so, the goal is to make it as youth-directed as possible, so we had youth meetings, uh, got a good turnout, uh, we've had about five in the almost two years, that, uh, it's been running, and youth come and give input on what they wanna see happen next, and then we, I do my best to, to make those things happen, so we've started a parkour program, and we've had dances, and we've had art programs, and we've run, we're coming up to our second youth week, which starts this Friday, um, and there's a new space that I know you know about, 'cause I talked to you about it when I was here last, um, that we did get a grant from Columbia Basin Trust from as well, so we know we have it for at least a year, uh, and we're going to do a bunch of things and, and work on making that sustainable. In the time that the Youth Action Network's been running, we've been able to leverage another sixty-four thousand and a bit in grants, mainly from Columbia Basin Trust, uh, from their youth granting streams. The, um, the large youth grants, which can be up to fifteen thousand dollars, we've received four of those, four for fif, or three for fifteen thousand, one for five thousand, uh, two were those for, were for youth week, one is to keep the center open for the next year, and one was for bike programs that we ran last summer. Uh, and then we've had some, um, youth action grants, which are some of my favorite, even though they're smaller, because the youth have to come with the idea, be supported by a mentor, which is me, and then help run the project, so we've, we've received a few of those, that's how we got our three D printer, um, we got some button makers and are doing this, uh, creating a support of Roslin, uh, project that I know some people were involved in on council around supporting GBLTTQ folks here in town, um, and we received money to, um, help with the Ross Glen revitalization last spring, so those have been some of the projects. Um, to date, it's been me, and a lot of community support, I think one of the best things that's happened is there's been really good partnerships formed with the schools, most Seven Summits and RSS, with, um, the Roslin Council for Arts and Culture, with the Rotary Club, like the Interact, um, and really great support from businesses in the community, and, um, and really great support from the city. So city staff have been, um, really, really helpful in, in making this project a success, so I just wanted you to know that, for sure. And, and so now, I guess, moving forward, we're going to, um, well, we have youth week that starts next week, so nothing else happens until that's done. Um, but, yeah, we're gonna be looking at starting new programs, we're gonna do some more input sessions, now that we know that this, this space that we've located on Columbia is going to stay, and, um, and start expanding programming there, and, and working on just creating, continuing to create new stuff that youth want.
Great, you guys have done a really good job. In fact, uh, I've heard that you're the most successful of the youth groups that CBT has, so that's quite, that's quite the compliment, so, yeah, that's really good. Um, I had a question, this relates more to the thing coming up on the agenda later, but since you're here.
Okay, yes.
In part of your agreement, you were required to have liability insurance that covers you as the coordinator, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering how that could play into our next discussion on the agenda about insurance.
Well, and so I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure, because insurance is a bit of a, a mystery, and Robin and I have had lots of conversations about that. So, yes, my, through my company, I have insurance that only covers me.
Okay.
As, and, and that's a requirement with my contract with the city.
Right. Um... And the requirement with the, the city to, to CBT is that, is the insurance?
Yes, uh, so what it doesn't cover, though, is any of the volunteers.
Right.
People who are volunteering, and it doesn't cover programs like the parkour program specifically, or the skate park program.
Okay.
Um, so that is, um, yeah, I think that, it's, it's different from the insurance
Right, so we're talking about, okay, that, yeah, I wasn't saying, I wasn't sure. Okay, that's great. Um, and the other thing, you had the request in there about, uh, getting permission to apply for grants from your own, up to five, five thousand without community council for, for permission, but usually when a request is made at a delegation, then we, we give an answer at the next council meeting, right?
Right, yeah.
That gives us time to get that input in.
Sure, and I, I was informed of that, for sure. Uh, though there is a, there's, there is a grant that I've submitted to council, it's in the package?
It's in the package, yeah.
So I don't know, will you decide on whether that grant?
Yeah, we can decide on, we can decide on that one, because that's different.
Because I would have submitted tomorrow.
Yeah, 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 that's perfect. I had a question on that one, and why, because I don't know if you're gonna stay and listen to the whole, are you gonna stay for the whole thing, because I did have a question, this is not really a delegation, but, um, because on that grant application, it asked for, like, number of participants in the program, and there wasn't a number in there.
Well, I was actually confused about that, and I'm gonna talk to the credit union before I submit it, because, um, that question was confusing, because it, it sounded like, it sounded like the Youth Action Network as a whole, the number of participants, and then it, it asked, like, I thought the question was worded oddly, so my intent had been to actually talk to the funder before submitting it, to ensure that I got the...
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mike about YAN or anything else short of touching kids?
Just, just Mike, in regards to that application and, and the numbers, this particular application, and I briefly went through it, but it was specific to a program, correct?
Yes, yeah.
And you were buying some equipment.
So it's specific to the Maker Lab program, which is what they're calling the 3D printer program. And so the issue that, um, we were facing just prior to March break is that the number of kids coming, um, outstripped the resources that we had there. So we have some computers, uh, that were purchased on a previous youth grant, uh, before the Youth Action started, that Roslin Rec had, that they've given to us to use for that program. Um, and we have one printer. And so we were looking at, um, there's some really cool 3D pens now that are out, and we wanted to buy a few more computers and a projector, like some equipment, so that, um, all the youth who come can be engaged. So what I was hearing from the facilitators is that they didn't have enough equipment, some kids were kind of just sitting around.
Right.
So, you know, we have the, we have the, um, I guess, really good problem of too many kids are showing up.
And that's the, the difficulty in putting a number to it.
Right, well, and, and, I mean, I, I was, the part I was confused about in the grant that I wanted to clarify with the funder is how many kids are coming to that program, or how many kids are coming to Youth Action Network stuff in general?
Right.
Right? And so I hadn't clarified that before I had to submit it to, for the council package. So I apologize for that.
That's great. Anything else? Thank you, Mike, you're doing a wonderful job.
You're welcome. I just wanted to show you this.
Yeah, sure, what do you got?
Oh, yeah.
Nice. That could be us.
That could be you.
Is that JT?
It's actually not, it's Patrick Kinghorn.
Oh, okay.
That does kind of look like him.
That's great.
It's totally Patrick Kinghorn. But it, JT, it, there is a striking...
Yes, for sure.
That's funny, that's hilarious. And also, I want to take this opportunity to introduce our new interim CAO, Mike Maturo, to the gallery here, to the first regular council meeting that he has attended in his new role, so, yeah, so, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Our next delegation is Arts and Arts Council of Roslin. Come forward and talk to us about that time.
Roslin Council of Arts and Culture cap?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Nice to have Mr. Maturo back in the council room, I want to add. So, um, I think you have a picture, do they not, Cynthia, of what we call a kiosk, which is really just another word for a display board, bulletin board, that the previous council last fall had approved. So we went ahead and, uh, Arts Council went ahead and had it constructed by XL Welding, and it's ready for installment. It's actually been ready for about three months now. We're waiting for the ground to thaw. And, uh, I think in that one picture, you can see the wooden mock-up where the proposed location is by the trash cans at the northeast corner of the square. So it stands about, uh, well, you can see the sense of proportions there, it's not overwhelming. The Arts Council did have a kiosk until a couple of weeks ago that was across the street in that empty vacant lot just to the west side of Pro Hardware, where the Sphere, uh, is now, the Sphere of Influence, the new, uh, sculpture. Um, but that side of the street at the time wasn't very well, um, didn't have a lot of foot traffic, and, uh, so I think, the history is, I think Renate, the president of their council, spoke to Mike, when the whole streetscape was being, um, thought of a couple of years ago, and, uh, it, it was at that time, thought that the display, a new one, could be made and installed in the town square. Uh, we had that confirmed by the previous council last fall. It's made, and we would like to have it installed now. It's really heavy, so what we're asking, I'm sitting here asking for, is some assistance for, from the city to install it. Now, um, it needs two footings, uh, and I decided that boulder that's there, um, when we looked at it with Darren last fall, um, the thought was to have, uh, two small holes, well, to the appropriate depth, backpedaled out, fill it with concrete and rebar, put the bolts in the right place, and then, uh, once it's hardened, bring it in, XL will bring it up pre-charge, and, uh, Laura, they have a lift, lower it onto the bolts, and, and it's a, it's, it's a done deal. So we want to go, John at XL would like to get rid of it, we would like to have it installed. I think you can see the back, but I think it'll make a handsome addition to the, uh, street furniture, and it will certainly, um, this display board is specifically more for civic, um, nonprofits, uh, Roslin Rec, you know, it'll be big for, big enough for four posters, heavy traffic area, the Follies, that sort of thing, Joe Hill, not, you know, Red Mountain, or, um, the Steam Shovel, that sort of thing. So I guess we should come up with a policy on who will be in it. Um, but, um, we would like assistance from the city, and that's what I'm here for, to ask assistance from the city, if you could find it in your budgets and Direct Public Works to help us create the two footings so we can have it installed.
Did you have any conversation with Public Works about a potential cost?
Last fall, we did.
About a cost?
No. I wouldn't, no. I mean, I would hesitate to say I can't see it being a big ticket item, you know? I guess if we could have, you know, if, if you were kind of leaning that way and you had a dollar figure, you know, up to a certain amount, and, um, you know, like up to a thousand bucks, and, um, and, uh, and then if it was over, then, uh, we could, you know, see if we were going to do it ourselves or something like that.
Okay. You have some other questions? Andy?
Uh, with the Sphere of Influence, Larry, uh, who was, who did the foundation for that?
Uh, we bought the pad from the, from Council Guard, and they brought it in. The city did help, um, put it in place, put the pad. There was a, left a crane there that, I mean, the sphere itself was more awkward than it was heavy.
Right.
So there was, and Sue Campbell, he donated the time to actually weld the base to the pad that we brought in from Council Guard. I don't know what the dollar figure, I think Jim and the operator, Jim Mark and, Mark and Marco, Mark and Marco, was there, um, probably for a couple of hours, a couple of weeks ago, but I don't know what, uh, the dollar figure, I didn't have anything to do with that.
There's some other questions? Martin and then Andrew?
Yes, um, who's going to kind of administer this board?
Good question. I guess we're going to have to come up with a policy with that. I mean, if Roslin Rec is going to, um, use it, you know, that could be an avenue, you know? Or, you know, we'll have to designate somebody from the Arts Council, it will be locked. There are, uh, is a handle and two locks and one key and that sort of thing, so, yeah. That's, yeah, the devil's in the details for sure. Yeah.
Couple-sided? Sorry. Oh, you got, there's two out of the three of my questions you got there. Oh, I wanted to have a bunch of, I was curious, the metal side with the music notes, which side does that face? The street or...
Uh, well, John Lake would like the, uh, the musical motif to face the sidewalk, but I suspect it's going to face the parking lot, you know? People coming out of perils, yeah.
Yeah, looks good.
Andy?
So it is actually single-sided then?
Um, yeah, the motifs, the musical motif is just to, you know, fill in and make that blank, uh, wall or piece, uh, attractive. And then the front is, uh, plexiglass, just one paint, big sheet of plexiglass. And the whole thing will lift up, and there's, uh, it's actually done nicely. It's, it's got like two little struts like you'd have for an overhead door on a car, so once you lift it up, it'll stay up, and, uh, and then you won't get wet if you're, you know, replacing, uh, posters, that sort of thing.
Is it like cork board or something you know that you...
Actually, good point, no, it's a metal, the whole back piece is metal, and then we'll attach the posters with magnets.
Magnets.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, the only thing I would say is, having been on the last council that approved this, and seen the line drawing of it, I thought it was going to be more in the theme of the city colors, right? And when it came out, this sort of black and gold kind of Las Vegas-y looking thing, I went, whoa, huh, that is not at all what I expected.
Mm.
Um, and Stacy, you seem to be nodding your head, was that your understanding too?
That was my understanding, I just commented on that.
Yeah. So that, that was kind of a shocker for me, because in terms of it fitting into our streetscape and fitting into sort of our theme of town, you know, this is not that, right? Um, and I don't know, I mean...
Well, again, my concern is, um, the kiosk, the kiosk, I was involved in keeping the original kiosk, it was across the street, and, uh, we spent, I know the Arts Council spent several thousand dollars to have that kiosk built and installed there. Um, and it was strictly a, an Arts Council kiosk, it wasn't any other activities associated with the city or anything. So, um, this, this by the sounds of it is going to be more general use.
Well, the Arts Council's going to control it, right?
But more nonprofits, you know, the Follies, Joe Hill...
So, just to confirm, Kathy, that was, um, that was the plan?
What?
To have Roslin, City of Roslin on the backside?
Well, no, that's just our, no, 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 not City of Roslin, just the color, the theme was more to in keeping with our, with our brand, right? We're establishing this brand.
Right.
So it would have been these colors, right? Black and gold is sort of nowhere in the city.
If I could speak to that a little bit, um, the outline I wanted, I don't specifically, I mean, it was always going to be black, because with the signage policy for the downtown area, we were trying, I mean, there is a theme, you know, three-inch metal, painted black, the, the large obelisk, and, yeah, that sort of thing. The back, um, I hadn't, don't recall ever going with a color. Um, we did, okay, to be honest, I mean, when I saw the outline of the mountains, I went, oh, because I wanted it to be the same as on the signage, welcome to Roslin signage, you know, the tourism, the brand. But, uh, John Lake is so darn proud of his creation that, you know, and it was already tacked and made and, you know? I didn't have, I didn't have the heart to say, you know, where's the outline, you know? I mean, it's kind of the outline, but it's kind of not.
Kind of the outline.
It's kind of fancy-pull.
Yeah, that's the outline.
Yeah, you know.
So, I don't, I mean, I don't know how council feels about this, you know, we get, we get, we keep getting exceptions and exceptions and exceptions, you know, I don't know. Does staff have any comment? Stacy, do you want to...
I would like to, before I comment, I would like to go back and have a look, what was approved by council before commenting. It was my understanding, and I remember the draft, drawing that, that Burgundy mountainscape on it, and there being a Roslin for Council Arts and Culture in that same font and the, uh, in that mountainscape. And then there was a musical note. I don't know, I don't remember what color they were, but...
Yeah, that's...
That was, that's my memory, but I, I don't want to say for sure.
Well, I think there's a number of unanswered questions. I mean, from, from my mind, I think we need to get an idea from Public Works, what the cost would be, so we're not going to make a decision on this now anyway. And I would like to hear back from Stacy on, on those things, because I, I have to say, I was like, I mean, I, I felt a little, it is lovely, I mean, not to, not to criticize John's work at all, but it's just, is it in keeping with what we're trying to create instead of the brand downtown? The fact that it faces the parking lot, maybe it's better, but...
The other thing is that we have this other sign, um, St. Paul, uh, is it St. Paul?
Which one? Oh, the one, the one, the new one.
The new one, yeah.
Yeah, the new one, and it follows that kind of theme.
Yeah.
So, and it's going to, to promote events as well, public events.
Yeah, but not a lot, as much foot traffic, that's more drive-by.
Yeah, that's drive-by.
Correct, correct. But, you know, so this thing could potentially, in my mind anyway, complement that other sign, and so I think there's a certain synergy that could occur because of these array of signs, and so it would make some sense that these are all designed along the same theme. So that maybe some additions could be made to it.
I don't know, I just know that we had a budget of three thousand dollars and it's been spent, you know, and, um, yeah, so I guess I leave it in your hands, you know, um, I, I, well, in the sense that I know that it doesn't look like the outline of the mountains, but then on the other hand, artistic freedom is worth something, you know?
Yeah, you know, I'm not actually as bothered by the outline of the mountain as I am the black and gold color, just that, that, and I'm, I'm just talking about the whole big mass of black, not the frame on the problem frame. But anyway, let's hear back from staff on that and figure out a cost, and then we'll, we'll look at it again.
I mean, you do recall that, what is it, uh, a camel is a horse designed by a committee? Now, a camel is not necessarily ugly, it's not a horse, but the arts can be an attract living animal.
They do fit, they do fit.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I know what you had in your mind, I know what I had in my mind, John Lake is just beaming, you know, what's in the face of traffic, you know, so I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place too on that, you know? So, okay, so...
It'll face the traffic in the parking lot.
So I'll wait to hear from the planning department, or...
Yeah, 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 that's, we'll just, we'll just give you more information on it.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Larry, yeah.
Um, okay, so, we have a bunch of minutes to adopt, and I would like to have a motion to adopt the special minutes, let's see, let's do the special one, we can do all the special ones together, A through C as a block, unless anyone has anything to say about them. Can I get a motion to that effect, Cynthia, you all right with that? Okay, A through C, Andy moves, and Andrew seconds. Any discussion on those special meetings and minutes? A through C, all in favor? Okay, carry. Um, and then let's do minutes for committee of the whole, April thirteenth, be adopted, any recommendations within be approved. Can I have a mover? Somebody? Andy, Lloyd, all in favor? Good. You guys, you gotta keep moving the, unless you have something to say about them. Um, and then that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting on April thirteenth be adopted? A mover? John, Andrew, any discussion? Those minutes, somebody?
I saw an email from Aaron, he had some concern about the, uh, about the hydrant contract.
Oh, yeah, I was going to update that in, um, my members' report, about, because I did talk to the regional district about the hydrants. Um, I can just tell you now, basically, every municipality pays, pays the same.
The same.
Um, if we wanted to, and that's been approved by the regional district board, probably if we wanted to make a change to that, we'd put it in for next year, if we wanted to put a rec, a request, oh, no, no, not next year, because it's a three-year contract, isn't it Cynthia? That hydrant thing, I think was a three-year contract. I'm not sure. I think it was.
Yeah, it was seventeen hundred dollars we got from the regional district.
Yeah, but I think it's a three-year contract.
And it's based on, uh...
Three years?
No, three, three thousand.
I don't remember. I don't remember, we'd have to go back to those minutes.
No.
Is that going to interfere with us adopting these minutes? I don't think so. I don't think so. Can we vote on these minutes?
Well, I assume so.
If we wanted to put a rec, a request, oh, no, no, not next year, because it's a three-year contract, isn't it Cynthia? That hydrant thing, I think it was a three-year contract. I think it was.
Yeah, it was seventeen hundred dollars we got from the regional district.
Yeah, but I think it's a three-year contract.
And it's based on?
Three years?
No, it's three, three thousand.
I don't remember. I don't remember, we'd have to go back to those minutes. Is that going to interfere with us adopting these minutes? I don't think so, I don't think so. Can we vote on these minutes?
Well, I see.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's good. Okay, we don't have anything under unfinished business, although the only thing is that, well, you know what? We don't have a recommendation from, from staff for a decision on approving the application for Yan. So I bet staff would recommend that we approve that. So I'm going to add it in there, okay? That's our new seven, I'm going to put it as a new seven A, because you guys may not want to stay for the whole meeting, huh? You just want to hear your stuff and go. Seven, seven A, yeah. Well, that, that'll make your two issues the top ones, right? So you'll be the grant, the Yan grant, okay. Okay, so, sorry about that. So, hey, that's where we are. So we have a recommendation, sorry. We have a recommendation that we approve the Yan grant to the credit union to get additional material for their maker, maker lab, lab, okay? You guys read the application, and do I have a mover for that? Andrew, move it, you've got a second, or John? Do we have some discussion?
Well, can I ask one little question?
You can.
It's just a small, it's a small point, but I was thinking about a, related to a cash situation where, because I guess Roslin is the actual flyer of the grant, City of Roslin, it's the name on it. I'm just curious if you could ever see, and I, I don't imagine there is, but like in cash, for example, if we had cash, then we had glow for the kids. And if glow would apply for a grant, then the grant would say, oh, sorry, cash, we already gave you one. I'm just curious if there's any possibility of that happening. So let's say Yan applies for a grant, and then Roslin wanted to apply for a grant missing from the people.
Well, I think it depends on the funder. So when I talk to, because this came up since we started around the Youth Action Network grants to Columbia Basin Trust, because I apply there a lot. And what I was told was different granting stuff at Columbia Basin Trust doesn't cross over. So unless you were going to apply to the youth funds for something outside the Youth Action Network, and we can, no matter how much money we get there, it doesn't affect any other grants at CBT. Nelson District Credit Union, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what their policy is.
I don't think the city ever applies to the credit union. I don't think the municipality applies to the credit union, have we ever? I'm not sure that we're an eligible.
I'm not sure if you're eligible.
As, as just for a city project, I mean, this is for Yan, right, Cynthia?
The City of Roslin is not an eligible applicant to Nelson District Credit Union, from my understanding.
Okay, first things, but it's okay for, for us to go through Yan as it, but not for our own purposes? So I don't think we'd be in a, in a.
I didn't imagine it was, but I just wanted to.
Well, it may be the case, I think, in some larger grants, which is why, you know, I tried to think about, I mean, we were talking about the other thing I requested, kind of put a limit. That's mainly for CBT Youth Action Grants, and there's kind of some others.
Okay. Andy?
This equipment that you are accruing, and you've got some equipment now already, so you've got 3D printer and a few other things.
Yes.
Is that Recreation Department asset?
It is an asset of the City of Roslin, and how you choose to, it's an asset of Youth Action Network, I'm a program of the city. The Youth Action Network ceases to be at some point, it's a City of Roslin asset, so the 3D printer is owned by the city, not by any other organization.
Okay, Martin?
So is Yan a nonprofit society?
No, it's a program of the City of Roslin.
Sorry, thank you. Didn't know that. I should know that.
Anything else about this? It's the motion to approve their application for a grant. All in favor? Okay, okay, good, thanks. Okay, now we have another, this is a request for decision. Municipal Insurance Association Associate Membership Liability Protection for Youth Action Network and Visions for Small Schools Recreation Programmer. I guess that's from the recreation, it's not for the recreation programmer, okay. The council approves the purchase of the insurance policies for both the Youth Action Network and Visions for Small Schools for a total of five hundred dollars. Now, we've had some conversation about this. I don't know if anybody wants to make that motion or a different motion having to do with insurance. Anybody read their email? Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, I guess I'll, I'm just trying to remember the specifics of how it works, but I guess it was go with the two fifty that covered the, and then it's taking out BSS and doing the new.
Yeah, and trying to do a new, a new committee. So what we need is a motion to establish a new committee.
So a motion to establish a new Action Network Committee? Is that what it's called?
Yeah, Advisory Committee, right? Advisory Committee, and then this, I mean, we can have a little, you know, let's put that motion on the floor, right? Make the motion about that.
And then my first question, but I'm curious, oh, sorry.
There's clarification on that motion first?
We're not going to make a motion that's in the recommendation, we're going to make a motion to.
No, I want clarification on that.
Okay, so should we do it in two parts? I'll say the other one, then we can, so the first one would be that we go ahead and do the two fifties, now that was to Yan, and then we'll talk about the next two fifty second.
Okay.
So let's do the two first, the two fifty first?
Okay, so.
So we'll improve, so we'll improve the insurance, to add on, what was it called?
Okay, council approves the purchase of Municipal Insurance Association Associate Membership Liability Protection Policies for the Youth Action Network, okay? And then not the other part, not Visions for Small Schools. Okay, so that's the first part.
Associate, okay.
Yeah, so that, so, okay, we have a seconded. Andy will second, some discussion?
I guess my main question is how is the, the new committee going to be different from the old? Is the new committee in that we talked about maybe?
We're not talking about the committee yet, we're talking about the two fifty.
Sorry, sir, I'm, I'm doing my wrong. I'm jumping ahead on our.
Do you want to talk about the two fifty?
No, I don't have much to say, but I'm afraid to, I'm afraid to.
Okay, anybody else want to talk about the two fifty? I want to talk about the two fifty, because we are out of compliance with our agreement with CBT. So we really need to do this, right? This is an important thing to do, especially with parkour and skate park activities, right?
So I guess I had a question in regards to that.
These aren't, these are art recreational programs that would normally be under, covered under a recreation policy? So because they're, because they're administered not by the Recreation Department, but by a separate entity of the city, they are included under a normal policy?
Our recreation program and the instructors are covered with various levels of insurance. But most recently, it was discovered that our instructors were not covered by municipal insurance. And so for approximately a year, we've been selling insurance to the instructors. And so now our recreation instructors have low, medium, and high risk levels of insurance that we sell to them on behalf of an insurance company. And so that's how the Recreation Department can run its program. So we have waivers in place for the participants, and we have insurance in place for the instructors that they purchase. And it's an annual insurance, so they can run it to many programs in years if they want, as long as they have that personal insurance. You know, cards, you carry it in a wallet, it's their insurance. So that's us. Now, at the Yan, we've been under the understanding for two years that as volunteers, all of Mike's volunteers, we have been told by our insurance company, MIA, that as volunteers for the city, they were covered by our MIA insurance. That has since been determined to be not the case. And so it's really important that particularly with youth, we can parkour, skateboarding, and all the fabulous programs in place that we get that insurance to you.
Okay.
And not all of the programs that are run through Yan are actually run through recreation, are they, or are they?
None of them are run through the Recreation Department. I support Yan from my desk in the Recreation Department. And that support can be photocopping, brainstorming, talking to the insurance representative. Whatever I can do as a city representative to assist Yan, which again is a program of the city.
Okay, great, all right, Martin?
So does the two fifty premium cover all of the eventualities faced by Mike's group?
It's worth five million dollars, which is a pretty good insurance policy.
Does it cover, does it provide the necessary coverage, I guess is the question.
As far as I can see, it does.
It doesn't exclude parkour and skateboards, for instance.
There's no insurance that I'm aware of, and certainly MIA insurance is one of the catalog of insurance, right? As a municipality, we have arenas and swimming pools and very high-risk opportunities. We have a high-risk mountain bike park, we have a beginner mountain bike park. So MIA insurance is the catalog of all. And if MIA is offering this as a way to protect associate members like Yan and its volunteers, I have some comfort that this is insurance.
Okay, I think unless there's another question, we'll call a question on this. All in favor of the two fifty for Yan? Good, no one opposed. Okay, that's great. Now, we have another motion. Andy, you're, you go ahead and make the motion, and I'll explain the whole thing to you.
So the second motion is to not approve the second two fifty.
We don't have to make that motion. We don't have to make that motion for, for, because we didn't make the motion that's actually in there. We made the motion we wanted to make.
That's right.
The second motion is to establish the committee.
Yes.
That's the second motion.
Yes, we should have made that motion that we, I can't wait to see my questions to get going. So you want to make this motion just while I, I don't have my note here exactly correct. I want to make this one quickly, I'll just.
Okay, well, because we were just going to make a motion to establish a committee, an advisory committee for Yan as a committee of council, right? So that's the motion. I'll make the motion. Andrew can second it, and then I'll speak to it. This is very unconventional. But we're trying to get a way to be really efficient with Yan, right? Like, they've sort of got inherited by Visions for Small Schools when Neighborhoods of Learning kind of didn't get funded and we moved, we moved on. But it's not really the ideal situation, because what they need is an advisory committee of people who are going to give them direction, bounce ideas off them, be able to bring all these ideas, and, and those people can come from anywhere in the community. They don't have to just be connected to a society like Visions for Small Schools. So we can set up a committee from council that will be open to people who are interested in advising Yan. And that will be more in keeping with the original spirit of Yan according to CBT anyway. So I think this is an excellent idea that Mike came up with. So that's basically it. Anybody want to have any questions about that idea? We'll also, we'll also, once we set this committee up, put an advertisement out for people to, to, you know, come to it. Because then it'll really be for Yan to be looking at the people and recruiting people to come and apply for it. And so we get segments of the community involved. So it's a low involvement for city staff, other than Cynthia will be putting an advertisement in, and we'll be getting applications. But it will run for Yan. Okay, any comments, questions, or call a question? Call a question, all in favor of the committee for Yan? Anyone opposed? Okay, good, we got a committee.
Do we need to specify who will sit on this committee?
No, we, it's a committee from the community, they will, Cynthia will put an advertisement.
No representation by council?
No, I don't think we need to.
So it's advising council and?
It's advising Yan.
And can they report to?
Yeah, and can report to us, yeah, they'll report to us, because Yan is a creature of council also, right?
Okay.
So, yeah. I mean, the terms of reference for it are really going to be to advise Yan. I mean, I don't think, if you want to write something up about how you see that committee working, and I think Robin would be a perfect one to be involved in it as well, right? Because she's already involved with Yan and Recreation of the City, so. So, yeah, we could appoint her as the committee, city committee person if we want to have a committee. You all right with that? Yeah, you guys. Robin, appoint, and we'll, yeah, she looks okay with that. Okay. Okay. So moving on, good? Request for council decision on the development permit application for Red Mountain Hotel. This is from the planner. And the motion is that the city approves the final concept submitted on March twenty-third for Red Mountain Hotel, property legal disguised as I described, as I won't go into it, located on Red Mountain Road. And further, that council considers recommendations from the city's design consultant regarding Red Mountain Design Consultant. Do I have a mover to that effect? Martin, and a seconded?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, John second, so a little discussion on this?
So, you know, I read the report, and it seemed, in spite of the recommendation, there seems to be a bit of a difference of opinion about this design, a little bit like the sign.
What?
So I, I guess, it begs the question, I mean, do these guys, the proponents sort of come with a design in their pocket and say, this is what we want to do? Because typically what happens is, at least in my experience, and I've been on both sides of the fence, representing a developer on one hand, and you usually sit down with the city and you kind of explain the concept that you've got in mind, and then you sort of go through a, an iterative process to come up with a, a design that works for everybody. And I, I'm just curious whether this is what's happened here, and we, we're.
Initially, sort of. We didn't go through exact design concept with them, but before they even submitted an application, we definitely sat down with the guidelines and the other violas as well, and what the city's expecting, and go ahead. Really, it was longer than that, but pretty much that was the outcome of it. And then you can see then what happened, really, I think it's, then it's the arguments against architects that happened after that. So then they did come forward with a design which really doesn't fit the design guidelines for Red Mountain. Some of it does, some of it doesn't. And it's pretty much the outcome of the initial development permit that was given to them, that said, yes, it's approved, but you need to address some of the concerns highlighted by the architect. Some of them were, but the design consultant that we have feels that we perhaps need to look at our guidelines if we're going to continue approving that style of development in, in that area.
So, so, I mean, that, sorry, but, but I mean, that kind of sort of shifts the focus away from the issue I have, which is whether you're going to approve, support this project. And I, I, I mean, I think the staff report supports the project, right? And, and I think Bob Inwood has said, well, you can support the project, but you should then go and fool around with the design guidelines and revisit them. So there's sort of two issues here. And, and so what are we really recommending, I guess? I mean, recommending approval of the project?
Right now, we're voting on approving, on approving it, right? But I, I think the point that Bob Inwood made, we're really, we're really good. We could set up a zone, we could do something else, we could get far more robust in, when we're talking to these people to say, really, this is, this is what we need. I mean, you know, in a way, it kind of does match the aesthetic of the lodge, which is maybe.
Which is where, I mean, that's where it came from.
Yeah.
The lodge is approved, and the addition to the lodge is approved.
Yeah.
A little bit of a different scenario, I know, but that was their inspiration, was the lodge.
Take the ugliest building in town and be inspired. Don't quote me, please.
You really don't compress purpose, it wasn't a great state either.
Yeah, no, but, so I, I think really, at this point, I mean, you have to look at it, it's like, this is a fantastic economic development project for us, it's something we need, we're not, we're kind of not necessarily thrilled with the way it looks. Although, you know, I'm learning to love it in its own way. But I think we should probably just go forward with, I would say we should go forward with this, and then we need to have the next step of the conversation, is what are we going to do to really, you know, put some teeth into our guidelines? Review our guidelines, maybe, or put teeth in the ones we have, if we like the ones we have. So that's what I suggest. So let's just keep moving with this, which is to approve this design, the amendment to their development permit and continue on. Do we have any other comments on that part of it? Lloyd?
Well, you know, when I saw the consultant's remarks, I, I kind of concurred with what he was saying. And I just wondered, I got an overview from Stacy here, whether he came in after the fact, but obviously the guidelines were circulated to the developer, and he just chose to ignore it. And, you know, when you do these kind of things, if you approve it on the basis you just want the development, that is a mistake, because then your guidelines don't mean anything, you know? And I just wonder when Bob Inwood coming in on the fourth, you know, he said we should review the Red Mountain Resort guidelines. Is there going to be an opportunity then to talk about this kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of got a full, a full, a full plate, but that, you know.
Yeah, he's going to talk more about the downtown.
The downtown, yeah. But, yeah. Wait a second, I think John next.
My feeling is it's sort of, it becomes, sort of dredgingly says it's okay. If you like it where it is, between the lodge and Slalom Creek, it does sort of fit in there. And really, as long as they keep doing things at the base and the Alpine alone, I don't, I don't mind.
Andy?
Yeah, this one I found really very interesting, because this goes right into my, what I'm working, the fee world here. And I really actually like that it's a little different than every other purpose village out there. At the same time, I mean, we're really sweet-spotted in authenticity and genuineness. So I kind of like it and a little bit dislike it for both, for that reason. And that you don't want to look just like every other resort out there, you absolutely don't. But you also want something that you want to know you're in Roslin when you're there. And I'm not, I think you actually do get a little bit of that from this. I, I, I don't entirely dislike it, is where I'm coming from, I guess, and it's a little bit different.
Italian Alps is what it says to me, doesn't say, doesn't say.
A little Italian out of the road, you know?
I'm going to let Andy.
So I guess where I'm going is that, yes, I would say, I would approve it as it is and fully support doing a good review of the guidelines.
Okay, Andy, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, if, I like the Italian Alps description, but it, it, you know, what, what the new lodge looks like, and. That was supposed to be me. And what the new lodge looks like. I'm sorry, it happened. I often meet it doing that. And, and the adjoining building, the condo development next to it, I, I just think it's a bit of a dog's breakfast now. So this is going to add to the dog's breakfast. And, and, you know, you're opening up a can of worms, I can see that. But, and I guess there's no way we can make any stipulations now, you know, on our approvals.
Well, we could, but I don't know that that would be productive, right, at this, at this point. Comment on that, Stacy?
That's, that's exactly what I was going to say, you could.
Yeah. I'm going to go to Martin, because he had a comment before. Okay, you done?
Yeah.
Martin?
Yeah, you know, I look around Rossin, and I think, you know, I'm all the attempts to go back to this sort of turn-of-the-century theme, and almost everything we build recently flies in the face of that theme. I mean, including everything around the base area. I mean, Ash's developments are very nice, and as are Felch's developments, very nice. But I mean, I, I don't know how that fits into our sort of heritage theme, I don't see it. When I look at this. When I look at this building, I, you know, I look at the Leroy Apartments, right at the top of the hill, I mean, it looks very snowy. And I don't know, I...
The next point is...
Whoever said dog's breakfast, well, I don't know if I agree with that, but, but, you know, there's a variety of styles and a variety of developments around Rodson, and it all makes a place sort of interesting, and I don't know, as far as I'm concerned, it kind of fits with, with that base area development, and I...
Okay. John? We'll finish up, because I think we're...
The theme out there, I think, is supposed to be mining camp.
Oh, perfect.
The mountain proj, the mountain project, which is down when you first come in, it, does it have metal siding on it or it is siding, so it's that mining theme? So that doesn't look like this, but it's sort of...
Okay, okay, I think, I think we've probably hit enough of this, right? Are we willing to call a question on this one and keep going?
Just like to say, if I go downtown and I look across at the south side of Columbia Avenue, and I see the design, and then when we compromised on the Ferrero Building, and we got to live with it for years, and it looks like hell.
Oh, really?
Yes. A little peak in the middle of a flat area.
Okay, I want to call a question on this one, okay? All in favor of the amended development permit? Anyone opposed? Okay, two opposed, and it carries four in favor, okay? Okay, so now, the next thing is, we could talk about getting some staff input from the consultant's proposal to review those guidelines. What do you get, what do you think about, right?
I think it's a conversation that council has to have on exactly what type of aesthetics or how meaty do you really want to make those guidelines? Do you want everything to look all the same, or do you not? I think it's a larger discussion that needs to be had than before even focusing on specifics of the guidelines. You know, I have my opinion of what I think, and that's purely my opinion, as will each one of you on what you think the design aesthetics should be up at the ski hill. So I think we probably need to have a larger discussion on that before...
So, the guidelines at the ski hill are different than the guidelines for downtown, right?
Yeah, they're more of the mountain aesthetic.
Right, so maybe you could just circulate those to us? And if you have already, I'm sorry, were they in our orientation package?
They were, they're in the O P P, but that's another thing.
Okay, so we could, maybe we could look at that and then put on a future agenda that we'll discuss that. Andy?
Would we have any impact? I mean, I get a feeling that we're just throwing the, the whole, the guidelines outside the window right now, and that, you know, everything is basically as the developers have wanted out there. And I, I mean, you've been involved in decisions in the past, and did we have any influence over the, over the guidelines, some of them?
Yeah, some, well, maybe not huge, but...
They did go back and make some changes from the last time council saw this and said, "No, take it back and make it do better with the guidelines," and they did, they did, they did make changes.
And what is our hesitation to do with this project?
Well, we did it with this project once already, is what we're saying.
And this is their...
And this is, yeah.
And the issue with going back to them now and saying that we're still not happy, change it.
Well, is it, are you that unhappy? I mean, I, personally, I guess I'm kind of agreeing with, I can sort of see that it fits into what's out there, maybe it isn't the guidelines, and so personally, I...
I guess it's, I feel like that artwork, right? On the back of the sign, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. I may have drawn up a little it, but I wouldn't want, I personally don't seem to us investing a lot of time into looking at guidelines that aren't being adhered to or considered anyway.
But maybe that's one of the things that when we look into the guidelines, that's the conversation that we have too, is that we really, going forward, we really expect these guidelines to be followed, and we back staff up a hundred percent when they go and say, "These are guidelines and we mean it, and you have to do this," right?
This is a perfect opportunity.
What are the things you're going to fight for? Things like snow and where you put snow and holding snow, I mean, that's something I think is worthwhile putting in our guidelines and that we would fight for, because having snow issues around buildings has prudence at...
Yeah.
That is something, that's in design guidelines, that's something you would fight for. So maybe we could move away from more aesthetic parts of the building, or maybe not, you know, that's a discussion I think that council could have.
Yeah.
I think, you know, that this could be a lengthy conversation.
I agree.
And I'm not sure we're going to resolve it here, but, you know, your request was, how do we sort of advance this? So I think, you know, we've made a decision as a council to approve this thing. Now, I suppose you can use some kind of persuasive discussion with the architects or owners. Maybe that might...
I don't think so now, we've approved it, right?
Yes, yeah, let's, let's move on, I mean, you know, but...
I mean, I think what we need to do now is, if we want to put a motion together to say what we, or a direction to staff, what do we want to do? Do we want to review those guidelines? Do we want to bring that back as an agenda item?
Well, you've asked for the guidelines to be circulated, I think we should revisit them, look at them, and see if we really want to do it. But I, I don't think, because you pick a theme that you're going to go with, doesn't mean everything's going to look the same.
No.
And that's what I was getting on the parapets on the south side of the street there.
Okay, so there's enough information for staff to take us to the next step on the guidelines, so I think we can move away from this, okay? Everybody good? Okay, so let's talk about the Redstone liquor license application, new temporary use areas, okay? So, that one is a request for decision. Roslin Council recommends the approval of two new temporary license areas for Redstone Report after considering potential noise, impact on the community, and that the fact there's been no comments received. So, do we have a mover to recommend that we approve those? Martin moves, John seconds. Do we have any discussion on that?
Golf will drive you to drink.
I mean, this seems like it's sort of a non-issue, I mean, I would have expected them to have a liquor license for both those facilities, so I see it as sort of a non-issue.
Well, they have it for their, their building, but they didn't have it for their...
They didn't have it for outside.
For the outside.
The outside area.
For the gazebo where the weddings take place, yeah.
Sure, sure.
Okay, let's call...
I recognize the thing of, like, quite a crazy process that people have to go through.
Yeah, it's a moneymaker for the province, that's what it is. Okay, I'm going to call a question on that one, all in favor? Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Okay, let's do it again, for the Roslin Beer Company liquor license application, that we recommend the issuance of a brewery lounge endorsement license to the Roslin Beer Company. Do I have a mover?
For the recommendation.
Okay, Lloyd, and a seconder, Martin, any discussion on this one? We'll all go have a beer when the patio opens.
I was going to say, we're all, we're all going to drink happily.
Okay, I'm going to call a question on that, unless there's comments, all good? Oh, did you have a comment?
No.
No, okay. All in favor? Good, no one opposed, all right. Great, bylaws. Now, we have a request for council decision on the heritage bylaw, and this is bylaw twenty-five eighty-nine, the Heritage Commission bylaw, read for the first, second, and third time. And, do I have a mover for that? No one is going to move the commission bylaw? Okay, Martin will move it. And anybody second it? John will second it, a little discussion? Martin, got anything to say?
Well, I think we should just call a question.
Call a question, nobody has any comments? Okay. The only comment I would make is that generally, I don't like to do three readings of a bylaw, but, in one sitting, I like to do three readings, but not at once. But because this one is one that we've talked about quite a bit, I don't feel uncomfortable with it, so that's, that's why I'm okay with it. Okay, call a question, all in favor? Anyone opposed? No one, thank you. Okay, so now, we have got, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I didn't miss, where are we? Did I miss our seven?
Seven E.
E? Yes, seven E. This is a request for decision on the covenant for Evergreen. And the request, Lois, is that we release the covenant and that we release the tax sales documents, is that right? Or is it just the covenant?
Just the covenant.
Okay, that we release the covenant. And just a couple of words on this one, and maybe Lois will answer questions if anybody has them. This is for the property in Evergreen that had a covenant on it to, so the city would get reimbursed for the deficiencies that the city paid to fix, right? The property's now for sale, there's an accepted offer on it, and as soon as we release the covenant, we will get paid, but we have to release the covenant first before we get paid, it's like one of these chicken and egg deals. So, anyway, but this has also been carefully handled by the city's attorney, probably at some expense, so that...
Do we want a motion first?
Yeah, well, yeah, I was just giving a little background, and we'll get the motion when we come with it. You know, at some expense to make sure that we are protected in this, so that it's not like we release the covenant and then they go, "Eeeeh, we're not paying," right? So it's all safe. Okay, so, have a motion to...
Sure.
Release the covenant. Okay, and a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay, Andy seconds. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, so, I mean, what, are we talking about some twenty-two thousand dollars or something in review work...
Eighteen, three eighty. Yeah. We'll receive a bit more than that, though, because they will also be required to pay the taxes that weren't paid before, so I don't know what the total is, twenty-something or other, or close to thirty, I think.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand total, yeah, so we'll get...
So, this will all come good then, there will be no arrears anywhere with regard to that development?
Nope, and there'll be new owners.
And new owners?
Yes.
But we're talking about the three lots, not the parcel seven or whatever it was? Is there another?
Not the big lot, just the three residential lot.
And, sorry, can I just ask, as a sidebar, does the city have any paper, I guess, or is there any, anything on parcel seven that indemnifies the city against any, any expenses? Or is that when that lot gets developed and there will be the right law and all that security?
Right now, there's nothing on that lot.
There's nothing? Okay, thank you.
Okay, call the question. I thought parcel seven was the third one, parcel seven not the third one.
I think you're referring to the big lot, though.
The big lot.
Okay, that's not seven.
It's not parcel seven, it's remainder, blah, 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 but I understand that's what you're, you're talking about, the big remainder lot.
Correct.
So what was phase two of the development, right? Phase two of the development, not the ones that were already subdivided at the, the three at the end of, that are the end.
So the finance company that owns the, that took over the bank property, or took back, I guess, it's security all the land, they've sold three lots, and then the remainder is that undeveloped parcel. We're talking two parcels, and that's for sale, of course.
Okay, call a question on releasing the covenant, all in favor? No one opposed? Good, thank you. Yeah, I almost slipped right by old Evergreen. Okay, we have no staff updates or reports unless you guys want to say something? Did I skip RMI? No, I'm getting there, I just, I'm on nine, right? Now, I'm going to request arising, because I had to go back, because I forgot seven E.
Nine.
Yeah, nine with staff updates and reports, which we don't have any. So ten is requests arising from correspondence. We have a memorandum from Lois and correspondence from Deanne Stephen about the resort municipality initiative. So, and, there. Okay. So, this one, we need a motion to allow tourism, well, to allow the city to, basically it's just move money around within the RMI account, right? We're not actually taking money out of our general fund and paying it to tourism or the RMI account.
Yes and no? If we approve that, then it is using more RMI money. In terms of moving money around, that would affect how we do move money around. I have got the amendment together, which I'm going to send tomorrow, but today I did receive an email from Amy at RMI, and she did kind of suggest that, you know, we can't do an amendment which is retrospectively funding a deficit. So, that's kind of a side note in terms of just what that email is. So, it's not spending our money, but it will, and it's where we spend money in the future. And if, if council does approve this, I will have to speak to RMI to see that they approve it.
Okay, so, okay. So we can't retroactively put money in there to cover a deficit, even though we had some money, we had some monies that we were, that we had. It's not, it's not money that we don't have, it's just money earmarked somewhere else. So we're, we're trying to transfer sort of between funds, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Did they have any ideas of how we could deal with this issue without doing that?
That city pays for it.
Well, we don't want to do that, we don't want to use the money that's in the RMI.
Yeah, so, that's, as I say, it's kind of a bigger issue in terms of if we allocate money to this, it could potentially affect the amendments as well, but...
I'm going to move, we, we do as, as Lois suggested, I thought was kind of a creative approach, but, sorry, so, it's, I put motion on the floor, so...
Okay, and did Cynthia get that motion? Do you have?
I don't understand what, what was the recommendation.
Are we...
Yeah, yeah, I was just thinking...
Approve the twenty-five eighty-seven?
Approve the twenty-five eighty-seven B.
Trans...
I can make a...
Make a recommendation, Lois, help us out here.
Is that you defer decision on this until we get, until we send the amendment to them and see what their reaction is.
Okay, so you don't need a council motion on this?
No, that would be a council, that would be a council motion, that we're...
Send amendment.
Yeah, that we're deferring until we get the results of the amendment. Okay? John, second six?
Okay, so what I don't understand about this, if the province is saying that they will not retroactively allow us to fund a deficit out of the RMI funds, we're in fact doing that, are we not?
That's what we're suggesting, but we're dressing it up in a slightly different way in terms of that we earmarked money early for the business center when we should have put it to the shovel box.
Correct. So this, will this come back, so if our statements are audited, is this going to come back and bite us, or do you feel that...
Um, it could potentially, yes, in terms of whenever they talk about future RMI funding, it's, it's on the condition of don't make any commitments until you've actually received the funds. The funds that you're expected to receive is pending performance, and also in terms of fund allocation, in terms of if they have the money available. So, they are very much watching the RMI, and there's no guarantees going forward.
Okay, so we're really talking about twenty-five hundred bucks, and I suppose the risk is not catastrophic, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is that we're going to defer dealing with the twenty-five hundred bucks until we get the results of the amendment to the province. That's the motion.
Yeah.
Martin made it, John seconded. Any further discussion on that? Okay, call a question, all in favor? Anyone opposed? No. Okay, that's that. The resort municipal, municipality strategy does need to be looked at, I guess, but I think Deanne would probably start working on that and bring it to us, right? Have you had a conversation with her about that, Martin or Lois, either of you? Because that was one of the things that...
It's in a roundabout way.
It's on my list of things to talk to Mike about.
Okay, then, then we won't make a motion about it at this point.
Yeah, there's no, no, no precise timing on this.
Yeah.
But we did agree in the meeting the other day that it would be done.
Yeah.
Oh, it has to be done?
Yeah.
It has to be? And then Deanne's kind of working on the assumption that she's doing it.
Yeah, well, and I think she should, right? I mean, she's the one closest in touch with, closest in touch with all things tourism. Okay, so we're done with RMI. We are now moving on to item ten B, which is correspondence from Golden City Days with request to the city of Roslin. And you have the request that came out, and then Cynthia had made some copies of the requests for last year, because the requests for this year are substantially more than they were last year, but I have no idea what that means in terms of cost. Like, last year, they were budgeted fifty-nine hundred dollars, and this year, Lloyd, do you remember they were cut down, they cut them down?
Cut it back to forty-four, didn't we, Lois?
Cut them...
We cut it back to forty-four this year for Golden City Days?
I think we did, that was one of the slides, that was one of the slides that was just up, was it forty-four or forty-eight? Anyway, so I'm just a little concerned, because they have asked for a lot more. And I... Anyway, so I'm just a little concerned, because they have asked for a lot more, um, and I, I don't know. I mean, in good conscience, can we approve this? Yes, and-
I'm gonna ask, did it go back to Darren, because certainly he, uh, a good part of this will be his, uh, his support, uh, through, through that department. Um, so whether it's a matter of putting together a budget for these items?
I would suggest we just send it back to staff and have-
Yeah.
Probably have Mike deal with whoever he needs to talk to on it, depending on what the item is, right? Because some of it might be recreation, some of it might be Darren, all that, have a dollar, have a dollar value.
Yep.
And also, I guess, talk to them about what their, uh, what their budget is, right? They may not know what their budget is compared to what they're spending was last year even. And I don't know what their spending was last year, right? I mean, I know Lois has it there, but I just don't know off the top of my head. We know the budget was fifty-nine hundred, but I don't know what they actually spent. So that's the other thing to look at, okay? So, um, you wanna make a motion to just, to refer this to staff for further information?
Yep, I'd like to, uh, refer and get a budget item put out.
Okay, Lloyd, second sit, and I'll call the question, unless there's any other comments. All in favor? Okay, no one opposed? Okay, I think that's good, just because they, they have put a bunch more stuff on that. Um, okay, so now we are into information items, so first what I'd like to do is go around the table and tell me which ones you want to talk about, and then we'll go back and talk about them. Um, Lloyd, do you know which ones you're interested in?
I've got E, D.
You've got E?
D.
Oh, D, okay.
And, uh, what's it, E, E, I.
I?
Yeah, anonymous letter.
Oh, that, okay, okay, so D and I, okay, anything else? Okay, Andy?
Lloyd's gone covered there.
Okay, Andrew?
I had B, B, E, I, J, I think most of them were covered.
B, B, E, I, J, okay, John?
I have it covered.
Okay, Martin? Nothing? Okay, um, I had A and C, as well as the rest of them, so, haha, that looks like we're kind of covering them. Um, I was gonna talk about A, only it's the compass, and it has the, um, the expression of interest for the energy work. Were you gonna talk about that in members' reports?
That, if that's the easiest place to put it down.
That's the easiest place to do it, so I, that's, we're done with A. Um, B is Montrose Family Fund. Aaron has mentioned that he could attend, that's June sixth. Is there anyone else from council who would like to go? I could potentially go to that, too.
I know, I could do June sixth.
Okay, so, and-
I'd probably go to that.
Okay, Sean? Anybody else?
I'll mark it down.
Okay, good. Whoa, Montrose won't know I hit him. That'll be the first time we've had-
You take the royal pool?
Yeah. Um, Trail Silver City Days, um, yes, we should go, we should be on bikes, and I want to know who wants to go. Aaron said he could do it.
Well, it's-
That's, uh, the, ooh, what is the date of that one? The, it's the parade is the-
It's coming up.
I think it's the ninth-
It was released, wasn't it?
No, I think-
Ninth of May.
I think it's May ninth.
It's only two weeks and a half away.
Yeah, yeah.
I won't be here.
It's May ninth, you won't be here. Anybody else want to ride bikes? Oh, you were thinking you were gonna be away, but you weren't sure. I wanted to ride the, I wanted to ride the-
The town's available, so I thought-
Yeah, but I wanted to ride it with you.
Well, there's a good chance they can do that.
Okay.
So we'll just put it down for now.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'd be there on a bike? Good, yeah, we gotta do bikes. Um, okay. Lloyd said no.
You sure you don't want to be in the back of a tandem, Lloyd? You don't even have a pedal?
I'd ride on a bike today.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it should work.
Okay, good. Okay, then, uh, let's see, we've got C. Somebody had C? Oh, that is C, that's trail. Okay, D. Who had D? Lloyd, I think you started it.
Yeah, the scholarship for the, uh-
Yeah.
Columbia Learning Center?
Yep.
Uh, we normally give scholarships and graduation, do we?
Yeah, we do. I think the normal was two fifty. I was gonna ask Cynthia to look that up, and I forgot. I think it's around, it's around two, two fifty, or maybe it was three hundred?
Someone from the two, someone from the two fifty.
Two or two fifty, okay, okay. Okay, yeah, so.
I had, I figured two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars, yeah. Well, we could just say whatever it was last year.
Yeah.
You know, because it's, it's right around, it's right around there. Um, it's a really good, it's a good program. I go, I've gone down several years and presented the check, and you hear some very inspirational stories about what those kids have overcome to get to the point of graduation, so I guess, um, any other comments on that? We've got two, no, we've got same as last year, whatever last year was, on the floor. And it was gonna be around two fifty, no?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that, or we just put that in? Okay, okay, that's good. Um, okay, that was D, so now we're on E.
I was gonna say, I think it's probably the same question everyone had, is what the heck went on?
I know. Okay, so I did talk to Steven, because I was sure that there was a proposal in there somewhere that he'd forgotten to give us, and he said, oh, no, no proposal was there, just a hundred and fifty pages of engineering drawing, which is the weirdest way to make a presentation. I shouldn't laugh, but I am laughing. Anyway, he is gonna come and, as a delegation, just so we can, we can hear his ideas, and we've already-
So what is the decision?
It's a senior housing, it's-
Yeah, yeah, I agree with it, but I mean, what is it?
Well, that's, he's, he's kept us on, on pins and needles, because we don't know. He's putting this out-
He's not a developer.
No, he's putting this out to all four communities to see if there's any interest, right? For partners. I don't know what the proposal is. Anyway, so we'll find out when he shows up, but we're, the, the ball is in his court, because Cynthia called him back, and so we'll see. Okay, um, okay, F, I had F on there, the Lieutenant Governor's visit on May twelfth. Um, I'm arranging sort of a light breakfast with local entrepreneurs like Hugh Finn, Thought Exchange, and hopefully Juicy, but I haven't heard back from everybody, um, maybe the new Roslyn binding company, too. And then all of council is welcome to join breakfast, and it's probably gonna start at seven-thirty, I think, she's an early riser. And then we're gonna go visit schools. We've got RSS and French School, and Seven Summits are all willing to do something-
Open their door for it?
Yeah, open the door for, um, yeah.
Kids will love that.
It's gonna be fun, yeah, it's actually gonna be fun. So, she's with us until just a little bit afternoon, and then she's doing her tutney tour, so... Um, okay, so that's that, that was F. Okay, I, we had Concerned Parents. Lloyd, you had a start on that, I think?
Yeah, why, why would we just not turn that over to the RCMP? Why do they come after us?
No, they're not coming after us. I think they're just asking, they're, they're asking us-
Yeah, be aware of it.
Notifying us of the condition in our community.
Well, did staff, uh, was staff directed to contact the RCMP?
Oh, no, I don't think so. I think that's what we're doing tonight. That's what, that's the recommendation that we, we have them do.
Confer with that recommendation.
And I would, too, and actually, you know what, I would say, going forward, you guys, you just do that.
Generally do.
Yeah, something like that comes in, just go for it.
It was addressed to Mayor and Council, so we gave it to the city.
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
Where is that site?
That's on where the bike, bike park.
I think it's by, but I've never heard it called that, Valve?
Yeah.
I, we were unsure about the exact location. We were thinking the lower, what they call the Centennial Bike Park.
Yeah.
Uh, the dump park there, that's just below the ball field.
Yeah.
Oh, below-
At, at Lions Park.
Lions Park.
Lions Park.
The Lions Campground.
Oh, well, we're here.
That, that's bike park.
Oh, I see.
Okay, let's not get, let's not get hung up on it. We will get some response from staff after they talk to the RCMP and do whatever they do.
Just one comment, too, if I may add to that, is this also is related to the incident that was recently up at the tunnel, because that's the other party spot, is the tunnel, and there was a major mess two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Um, that, that a, a number of concerned citizens, uh, got, um, that were involved in, so-
Yeah.
Is that one on that list, Cynthia, to tou, to touch base with them about the RCMP?
Well, I talked to the RCMP about that one, actually.
Oh, you did?
I did, because there were, you know, there was a, a-
A vehicle.
Car vehicles, and the RCMP did discuss the situation with the parents.
Right, and that really helped.
No, it did not.
Pardon?
Maybe since you could have, um, through the parks, but if you're-
Yeah, patrol, bye. Okay, okay, guys, keep going. Anything else on Concerned Parents, talking to the RCMP? No. Okay, so J, who had J? Strategic Community Investment Fund, we got our four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars this year.
Yeah.
Who wanted to talk about that? Somebody?
Uh, Lloyd probably.
Lloyd did? J?
No, I didn't bring it up. I know I did, but I'm, I'm actually more than annoyed.
Okay, okay, and that's it. Nobody wanted to talk about K, our April newsletter?
Good job.
Yeah, people like that.
Oh, we did, and, uh-
Okay, so, uh, we're-
I'll speak a little bit to that.
Oh, you don't have to, I was kidding.
Uh, just comments I'm getting is people are really happy about the communication from this council, and people feel very happy. And Steven said here the other day, and said, for the first time since she's moved here, she feels that the city's under good control.
Well, that's nice, nice to hear.
And just to comment, um, as I was dropping these things off at coffee shops and the library and various venues, everybody was, um, happy to, to get them.
Good.
They said, we really like them. We don't need, you know, twenty or thirty, we need maybe five.
Yeah.
And then they're, they're just there for everyone to read.
Yeah.
And medical clinics really appreciate having them as well.
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention, I took it into Monashie, I think one of the first ones, but-
Monashie, but the other one.
I didn't, I didn't do that, I just have the next one. Okay, that's great, good. Um, members' reports, so start with Lloyd, got anything?
I did meet with, uh, Deanne Stevens in the Lions Club concerning Lions Club, uh, campground. And before the Municipal Resort Association, or the Resort Association of B.C. had requirements for campgrounds, and since that time, they've, uh, discontinued, uh, those inspections and requirements. But the requirements certainly have some merit, and Deanne's gonna look them over and circulate them to council, and I think council should look them over. And what we think has merit, we'll put in place, and then when the Lions Club come with the plan to proceed on any renovations, we'll try to incorporate those requirements into the renovations.
Okay, now the Lions are waiting for us to get back to them with their, they wanted a five-year lease, wasn't it? A five-year lease, so we probably, if we want it-
Well, we had that discussion there, but at that time, we thought the regulations and requirements were in place.
Right.
And we left the meeting with the Lions Club gonna have their planner come together with the person from V.C. Municipal, or Resort Association, and they were gonna meet on-site, and I suggested a couple of councillors meet with them, and then they determine what they were gonna do.
Right.
And once, uh, everybody's on board, then council would consider a lease.
Right, okay.
But a, a five-year lease, when we don't know what they're gonna do, or if they're gonna meet the requirements.
No, that's what, that's what I was gonna say, actually, is that some of these conditions that you're talking about could be things that we put in that lease.
Yes.
So Lions would need to know that we're sort of, we're not gonna give them that lease right away, we're working on these other steps.
They went away from that meeting without understanding.
They did go without understanding?
Without understanding.
Okay, perfect, that's great, thank you.
And, uh, Cynthia took minutes of the Heritage Meeting on the twentieth, and there were a couple of requests from the Heritage Committee. One of them was that the Planning Department of City Roslyn give Heritage Committee notification of all improvements involving buildings, properties, listed on the Heritage Review, uh, the register. You know, so if there's anybody coming forth wanting to do any renovations there, they'd be notified, so they can be involved in the front end. Because a couple of times I went there, tried to identify the fact that often they hear about it after the fact, and they want to be involved more in the front end. And the other one was the Columbia Cemetery, too bad Stacy's gone, but she has started on a complete, uh, complete map of plot locations, complete with the names, but they liked, it's been going, going for a couple of years, and it's not a high priority with us, but they would like a date set, hopefully, they wondered if something like that could be accomplished by the end of the year two thousand fifteen.
Yeah, that has been something that they had requested, actually, Daki had talked to me about, and I talked to Stacy about it, and Stacy said, well, she does that when she has time, and she couldn't really commit to a, she couldn't really commit to a, a date, but we can turn that request. That'll come up in the minutes, when the minutes come, so that'll come up to us, and we can-
Yeah, we'll have to address it.
Have a conversation with them about that.
And the other thing they want to address is changing the name of Pioneer Park to Esalen Park. So that'll be a contentious too, issue, too.
Interesting.
Okay.
That's all I-
Okay, good. Andy?
Um, I actually, uh, wasn't able to attend the meeting on Thursday, because I was up in the cusp at the AKPLG.
At the LCCDPT?
Yes, there was an LCC, sorry, yes, there was an LCCDPT meeting this, and I actually just received, um, some minutes late this afternoon, um, and I just thought, one, one interesting factor was, was the discussion around the Columbia River Treaty, which is in the process. And the interesting thing that also was mentioned at the, at the conference in the cusp is about the native bands, and the, and the, and the excitement around reintroducing salmon to the Columbia, to the upper Columbia, not just the lower Columbia. So, um, uh, interesting that, uh, there's a number of initiatives, um, by not only bands, but also a number of environmental groups that are seriously looking at, at shooting salmon through tubes around the dams to bring them back into the, uh, upper Columbia River. So, um, yeah, that's one of the, one of the possibilities, kind of, kind of cool.
Yeah?
And just a quick comment on the introduction of salmon in freshwater. Um, in Lake Ontario, uh, Koko salmon were introduced to Lake Ontario, uh, twenty-five years ago, and after literally no fish, uh, of any kind being, uh, being able to live in Lake Ontario. And so this whole restocking, uh, program with Koho, it's been just a huge success, and they have a big Koko salmon derby every year, and for credit. And it's absolutely huge, and it, it just brings huge bucks in. So, you know, there could be some additional wrinkles to this introduction of salmon to the upper Columbia.
Hey, well, not to be left out of the discussion of fish. One of the things I learned at AKPLG was there's going to be a sturgeon release at Gyro Park on May fifth, from three to five, I think, is, I think-
Three to five in the Roslyn Telegram.
Yeah.
Which I think is probably pretty cool.
That'd be sending, wouldn't it?
No, May fifth is a Tuesday. Okay, you done with, uh, members' reports? Do you want to say anything about AKPLG?
Yeah, I, I just would like to say, um, just briefly, I, I would have liked to put a long written report together today, but didn't get an opportunity yet, but, um, it was a really informative, uh, convention, you know, the seminars were, were quite interesting. I especially liked to hear, uh, the, the interest, or their correlation between the area association municipalities and UBCM. And we had some really good speakers, uh, in particular Deb Gray was there, former MP Deb Gray from Ottawa. Uh, she's quite, quite the character, and, uh, and a very, very, uh, strong speaker, so it was really neat to have her there. But I did, I, I was quite interested in the process of how, how the information from area associations or area municipalities ends up in, in Vancouver, and eventually to Victoria. So it was really neat to see how, um, our, our interests, our, our issues get to, uh, get to the province. And that was a good process for me to be involved, or to see, uh, so when it comes time for us to be involved at that level, and, and to move some of our issues forward at the regional level, then see them go beyond, cool.
You mean, there is hope beyond hope?
There's hope beyond hope.
There is hope beyond hope, yeah.
Okay, Andrew, members' report.
So we'll start with this, uh, you've been calling it CELP or CELP, I'm calling it CELP, but after I look at it, it looks like CELP. It is the Community Energy Leadership Program, CELP, CELP, whatever you want to call it. So this is, I don't, you guys haven't seen the email on this, I don't think. It actually came out of, originally it was in the compass, right? There's an UBCM compass. Anyway, they've got this, uh, one-point-two-four million dollar program from the, same as the ICE, uh, the Innovative Clean Energy Awards, and it's all about, they're putting up, uh, like, very expressive of interest, looking at doing a three-year program with this one-point-two-four million. Uh, they were looking for applications between twenty and eighty grand, and they want to do a, a host of stuff around renewable energy. So it could be something that you're gonna do a renewable energy capital project, or it could be an energy efficiency, and they say specifically for a local government or First Nations-owned buildings. So Kathy put the call around, saying, hey, what can we do with this? And then Aaron had a great idea of what we have that might be there, is, um, the report that we did on City Hall and the arena, the-
Audit.
Audit, audit part one there, and so that one had a couple of good potential projects in there. It would be a little bit of fudge job, in that we're not quite as ready as we need to be for this one.
No, 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 for an expression of interest, we're, we're ready enough.
Yes, for the expression of interest, but then the question is, can we go from expression of interest to be ready for the application, the time for the application?
We don't know when the application's gonna be.
No, we don't, but we do know it's gonna go for three years, and I should add in here, so one of the ideas we talked about, of course, yeah, was City Hall and, uh, arena. The other option is out there, of course, and, and Mike, you're, you're mentioning this in our last Energy Task Force meeting, the idea of the heat loss on the public works building, some kind of an air wall, or maybe something like those plastic vents you see at the, at the grocery store where you keep, keep cooler in, basically, when you have a door open. Uh, I was talking to Ken Holmes up today, I just flew over to buy him to see what he was thinking, and should just, real quick, there it is. So he, he, the summary of what he was saying is that, uh, he thinks it would be a very rushed and less likely chance of succeeding if we pushed it for this year, and then reminded us that, yes, it is a three-year program, perhaps we should aim for next year. Thinking primary, I'll, I'll read you a couple of his little, a couple of his objections. And then reminded us that, yes, it is a three-year program. Perhaps we should aim for next year. Thinking primarily, I'll, I'll read you a couple of his little, a couple of his objections here that made some good sense. So the first thing you notice was that, for example, those are A S H R A E Level One audits, which he calls them walkthrough audits. That you could never base a cost estimate considered suitable for appropriating funds for developing the bid in this case. Uh, and they're only good enough for basically using it to sort the priorities. So it's not really, uh, a great estimate to put in for a grant. And he thinks that would be a knock against us, which it may well be. Uh, and then, of course.
Wouldn't be putting that in for the grant. That's the thing, right? It isn't the expression of interest and then we'll put the expression of interest in.
Yes, that happens between expression of interest and application. So this is, this is what he's saying, that should, I mean, if you, if you know you're not gonna make it from expression of interest to application, maybe you don't do that expression of interest rate.
Right.
So, uh, and then he had a couple of different, and he basically wrote a little eight-step report, uh, step of, here's the eight steps that we need to do. He suggests around number two and the application is around six or seven. So there is a lot of work to do. Could we get it done between now and the application? Possible, certainly possible.
Especially since we don't know when the application's due.
We don't know exactly what it's going to be. So we can put in, so I guess what we wanted to know tonight is, uh, do we wanna go ahead and put in the expression of interest, uh, which is due next Monday, but it's relatively easy and we can get that done literally by tomorrow. We can have that done and put it in.
I would like to ask Mike this, and I hate to push you on the spot, your first day in the job, but, um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that at all or talk to Stacy about it?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
We can.
I mean, one thing we could do tonight is we could just dump this over to staff and say, we'll make, we'll direct staff to look at it. And if they think it's a, if they think it's reasonable to do, then do it.
And it probably doesn't hurt us to be in the expression of interest, and, and even if we decided not to go to the application.
Yeah.
And then we can always come back and make sure if something else, if it doesn't work out. So it's kind of the things where, you know, we can take step one and there's no downside to it.
Yeah, the other thing is, we, some of the, some of the, the audit work has been done, so the, so the projects are identified, right? And this is a hundred percent money. It's not matching money. So if we got the money, you know, we could potentially do it. So I.
I noticed, though, while it is a hundred percent, they also do a question of applicants, what are leverage percentages? So I'm, it probably is not really a hundred percent.
Yeah, well, you would have to put something into it, right? You would have to put something into it. But anyway, I think we should, I think we should toss it to staff and, and let them. Cause it got between now and May fourth to actually get the expression.
And it's pretty easy, the first step is pretty easy. It's like ten relatively simple questions that are a couple of simple questions.
Yeah, yeah. But there's a little bit of work to go then. Mike, do you wanna comment?
So the CELP?
Yeah.
Run at that for a little bit?
Yeah.
And then could we just, uh, we won't have another council meeting till.
Well.
But we can push them along, just.
Yeah, I mean, what I was gonna, what I was gonna suggest is that we direct staff to look at this and if, if it, if it looks like it's feasible and reasonable to put in the expression of interest, do it. That could be what we suggest tonight, right? Because there's no obligation on the expression of interest, right? If staff has enough time to look at it and say, yeah, we could do this. And, and really, we don't know when the grant is, the grant window is gonna open. It may, who knows when it'll be?
If it's in the queue and then the chance might be there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't see, I don't see a downside for it myself, right?
Worst case scenario, we run it again next year?
That's right. That's right. So, um, any other comment on that? Andrew's just made that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second it.
And Andy seconds it. So any other discussion on that? Just direct staff to look at that. Okay, all called a question? All in favor? Anyone opposed? No one opposed? Okay, yeah.
I thought there was only a couple of things for members' report beyond that. Uh, where they had a little article in Roslin News last night, or last week, did it come out last week?
Yes, I thought. I was gonna thank you for writing that, cause it looked good.
And then the other thing coming up this Friday that I'm gonna be taking part in is the Red Talks with Deanne.
Oh, good.
So I'm gonna be one of their speakers. And they also, also had a question. Three of their speakers dropped out in the last week. And they're desperately looking if anyone has any ideas on exciting, engaging people in town that have a cool story to tell.
Ooh, exciting, engaging people.
And the buyer just came down a whole lot lower for exciting, engaging.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe it could be, it could be a mayor thing.
Oh, yeah.
This is the end?
Yeah.
This is the end, yeah. It's, so this Friday, minors law at seven o'clock, twelve dollars, Dallas, ten dollars, kids. Should be a great event. Should be at least one really good speaker.
Yeah, yeah. But what, what do they want? I mean, I'm wondering if Martin could talk about international.
Guidelines if you like.
Yeah. Circulate the guidelines.
Only a ten-minute topic, it's pretty quick. But also, even for the ledger, and then Johnny's content from Seven Summit, keep that one in the head.
Mm, okay. Okay, that's good.
All good?
All good. John?
Okay, Lloyd covered heritage. Uh, I went to the Museum Development Committee Meeting. And first thing they want to know is who's gonna be their city liaison to replace Tracy. And I said, maybe it's Dr. Mike.
Tracy was the city liaison for the, oh, yeah, yes, she was. Yeah, she was. Okay.
They talked about fundraising. Uh, they're forming a fundraising committee. There was a lot of talk about the plans, where they are with the plans. The tax donated, are giving the twenty thousand dollars. That's for drawings, uh, for the, the, what they're trying to do is get the existing mechanical and existing drawings. I guess the drawings for the museum have been lost, so they're trying to get those replaced so they can go on with the design. And that was about it.
What about the business? They were gonna do a business plan. Did they talk about that?
Uh, they might have. I didn't.
Didn't make a note of it?
I didn't make a note of it.
Okay, well, when you go to the next one of those meetings, make sure you ask about that, cause that's been something that, that I think is really important for them to produce, right? Cause they, they had to put some numbers.
Actually, yes. Um, another thing, Richard Fish did a lot of work on that.
Yeah.
And he handed it off. He's off for the summer, I guess. So he's stepped up that I don't know is taking it over him.
Okay, okay.
I guess Richard's done a lot of work on that.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Done? Okay. Martin?
Okay, so just a couple of updates on the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, RMI for, um, Tourism Roslin. Um, as you remember, at the last council meeting, you released the other, uh, fifty percent of the, um, the grant to the Chamber of Commerce. So that enables them to sort of complete the lineup of the chamber and to keep working on merger with Trail. Um, the only outstanding issue is that the Trail Chamber needs to have a special general meeting, um, to pass a resolution, agree to the merger. So that's outstanding. That's not news. Um, Deanne promised, as we heard earlier, uh, promised to, uh, do a revised plan for the RMI funds, the civil capital plan. And they're really in the best position to do that. I mean, they got, you know, representatives of all, you know, the museum and the mountain and everybody. I mean, it's probably dominated not so much by Red Mountain, but by community groups. And, um, Black Jack as well. And, um, I'm sure they'll come up with, with, with good ideas for spending this fifty thousand, or it could be even eighty thousand a year over the next couple of years.
Well, it's required to be a public engagement kind of thing, which Deanne has run in the past.
It is. And, um, she's done a good job in the past and I don't expect that to be any different going forward. Um, but they really are in the best position to determine what projects would in fact result in more visitors. And that's what the program is mandated to do. Um, the other comment, um, is regarding accommodation. I mean, we all kinda looked at, looked at this past year and thought, my goodness, God, you know, it was a pretty crappy year. But in fact, the accommodation stats, uh, which Deanne circulated, uh, a few days ago showed, uh, I think, record.
For twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
Wow. People booked early, didn't cancel.
For twenty fifteen?
For twenty fifteen.
For twenty fifteen. So they had very, uh, the accommodators apparently had a very good, uh, February. So that's really good news. I was just blown away by that. And so the results, uh, I mean, the comments around town have been exceedingly positive. Grateful to Tourism Roslin. So Tourism Roslin, I think, uh, because they're so engaged with all these stakeholders in the tourist industry, um, seems to be doing a hell of a job. So I think we're, uh, it's good for council to continue to support them as they did with the community grant.
Anything else? Nope. Okay, I, oh, you've got.
I did forget something. The watermarking issue with Tourism Rupper with, uh, Heritage and Museum. I went and talked to Jackie. She flatly refuses to sign this thing from the museum. She asked me to say petty, 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 but I said I will and I suggest we forget it for profit assistance.
And the, that.
It's these photographs.
Agreement, but it's the agreement that they would want, they would, when, if they use museum photographs, they would have them watermarked.
Yeah.
And she won't sign that.
She won't sign it.
And why won't she sign it? Decide it being petty to recognize someone else's rights?
She lit into me and, uh, Libby, Libby has pretty much said, forget it, but she does want this signed. So I went to Jackie to see if she would sign it and she won't. Uh, she said the museum's being petty and she had all sorts of excuses where these photographs have been used elsewhere and not watermarked. And, you know, I just said, forget it.
Resisting change, I'd say.
Uh, yeah, it's actually.
Okay, well, we'll deal with that.
We just let it go and.
Well, it's, but it's up to the museum. It's the museum, it's, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Museum wants their things watermarked and they should because it's their property, right?
That's what I, I said. Jackie, I don't know why, but they're their photographs, so they have the right to demand they be watermarked.
Okay, so quickly, um, Resort Municipality Meeting is coming up in Harrison Hot Springs. Um, I think that Deanne should go and it's usually, this is sort of a staff thing, right? Um, so I would say it's up to Mike, whether Mike wants to go himself or send Lois. Um, we always send somebody, right? Um, so Mike, you can make that, make that decision. Look into that. It's, I think it's two days in Harrison Hot Springs. Um, I finally have appointments, uh, an appointment with Minister Oaks and Victoria to talk about our grants. Um, and many process of putting together a little kind of intro to Roslin, intro to why we should get grants, which I'll circulate. Deanne has been helping me too. She just, she sent some good material over today. Um, so I'll send that back around to everybody. So I'm pretty excited about that. I'll leave on the thirteenth and have the meeting on the fourteenth. Um, so that'll be good. Um.
Good question, Karen.
Yes.
Thought about taking Deanne with you.
Deanne to.
Stevens to Victoria with you.
Well, you know, the, well, there, there is another, there is another question on there. It's because we do have this RMI thing about trying to switch over some things with RMI to get them to acknowledge, um, Deanne as our sort of official person rather than a staff person. I, I did consider taking somebody, but actually I was thinking of having Martin go. Um, but, you know, we can still, I'm still, I'm still not sure. Uh, for one thing, I don't have a, an appointment with that minister and, and, and then I wanted to talk to Martin about this.